Good evening, everyone. Sei Go Ani Bu Ju Endio Wa Cheya Kue Kue. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting in committee of the whole closed meeting. We did discuss several items, respect to Clogs Road Business Park, collective bargaining with QP Local 109, and also some potential litigation. So, Madam Clerk, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor Ridge, seconded by Counselor Amos, that counsel rise from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting without reporting.
Okay, thank you. So, just a couple of quick notes, first of all. We are going to, once again, attempt to do administrative votes by hand, but once we get to reports, we will, once again, try to use the new voting system. So, just if everyone can be logged in, ready to go for that. We have already approved the addits. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interests? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move right to delegations. We have three delegations on our list. So, first, we will invite Christine Sidnovich to appear before counsel to speak to Clause Four of Report Number 80 from the CAO regarding council procedural bylaw updates. And just a reminder to all of our delegations, you have five minutes, and then we'll open up to questions from members of council. Ms. Sidnovich. It should be on. Can we just get the microphone on? No, I think you can.
Hello?
Yes.
There we go. Great, sorry. Thank you very much. My name is Christine Sidnovich. I am Chair of the Coalition of Kingston Communities, an umbrella organization of over twenty community groups that advocates for transparency and accountability at City Hall. The Coalition appreciates this opportunity to speak to you about proposed changes to the city's procedural bylaw. The city's recently released Mission, Vision, and Values Document, stresses being inclusive, fostering collaboration, valuing everyone for their diverse perspectives and identities, building strong relationships to achieve shared goals, meeting the community's concerns through transparency and accountability, and finding creative solutions. The city is not a business, a message we unfortunately often read in city communications. City Council is a democratic body which exists to represent and serve the residents of Kingston. Democracy is not just about periodic elections, it's also about opportunities for public participation between elections. This means genuine processes of consultation where fair procedures are transparent and consistent, and the input from members of the public is respected and can result in improvements to proposals. We're pleased to see the proposal that the number of delegations at council be increased from three to six. However, there's now a limit on the total number of delegations and a limit of three minutes for delegations beyond six, creating competition for the best delegation spots. Other revisions further minimize public participation. For example, one, prohibiting delegations to council that pertain to an information report or the work of a standing committee seems an arbitrary exclusion, removing a crucial opportunity for public deliberation. This is coupled with the erosion of the standing committee system, a trend in recent years. More items now come to council without ever going to committee. Anyone who's interested in their neighborhood or broader Kingston issues will have to monitor not just council and planning committee agendas, meeting schedules that are quite regular, but also the agendas of the three standing committees whose meeting schedules have not been consistent. Two, any staff report that includes options would go directly to council, not to a standing committee. The argument for this is that counselors who are not on the committee would not know about the rejected options. There are other ways to solve this. The proposal means that a staff report need only include a do-nothing option to short-circuit the appropriate standing committee. There's an example of this on tonight's agenda, with the CAO presenting a for-consideration proposal that has not been to committee. It has a do-nothing option. Three, which brings me to the final, most surprising aspect of the proposal before you tonight. It was not brought to the Administrative Policies Committee first. Their deliberation and review could have occurred before now. With the January 2025 implementation date, there's still time to send this to committee. Why wouldn't council want to hear from residents on the proposal to send motions with options directly to council? Why has there been no public discussion about the proposal to prohibit motions about, quote, "an international political activity or spontaneous world event," unquote? Reports with options and information reports are the best time to hear diverse perspectives, understand the concerns of the community, and find ways to achieve creative solutions and shared goals. To conclude, the Coalition urges council to refer this report to the Administrative Policies Committee to ensure careful consideration of its significant policy changes. These are more than housekeeping matters in the amendment before you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to our second delegation this evening. We will invite Greg Samuel to speak to council, again, with respect to the council procedural bylaw updates.
Hi, how are you? So, oh, thank you for allowing me to speak. It sounds like the council wants to stay out of geopolitical issues and, what, world? What was that? What's the second one? World events? Okay. So, three months from now, something happens in your beloved country of Iceland, and you want to make a motion to support it in its time of need. Well, it sounds like you can't. World events also includes earthquakes. So, whatever, Switzerland has an earthquake, you've got a lot of family there, you want to make a motion to support it? It sounds like you can't from now on. So, anybody have any objections to that? Nobody? You okay with that? All right. Fine. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Okay, if not, we'll move to our third delegation this evening. We'll invite Richard Gibson from the Limestone City Cooperative Housing, Inc., to speak to council with respect to Clause One, Report Number 81 from the CAO.
Yes, sir, I am. I'm just looking to see if the video could get started up. Here we are.
Oh, there we go. Okay, yes, Mr. Gibson, welcome. We can see you, and so I will hand the floor over to you.
You can see me and hear me.
Yes, we can. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, okay, I'll start right now. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I want to talk about the information package that you have in front of you regarding the LCCH co-op, and I was asked by Jeff to speak to the funding opportunities and the grant, funding and grant opportunities. So, first, I'd like to say that this is a really interesting and innovative project. I represent one half of the design and science innovation architectural firm that actually helped put the package together that you've got in front of you there. Now, that's only halfway to the finish line. The other half is looking to see how we can actually make this vision a reality. So, I am also in a strategic associate with BDLs International Group. BDLs International Group is a funding strategic alliance and government relations group that has a strong background of individuals in it. First thing I'd like to say is that there's myself there. I have thirty years of background in science and innovation development and funding, and I'm one of the grant writers there. I'd also like to just take a moment to introduce a couple of the other folks that are part of this. Ray Burgess is the CEO, and he's been running BDLs International Group for over thirty years. He has international experience in grant writing. He is exceptionally well-connected at the federal government level with the executive directors, ADMs. We have no issue getting access to various folks at the government to actually talk about them, talk about the projects. And actually, that's what I wanted to start with first, is that, you know, a lot of people ask, are you a grant writer? Do you do grant writing? Yes, that's the last step in the process. The very first step is a conversation, not an application. And we have a number of strong people in the group here that can actually help with that. We have Ray Burgess, as I mentioned, he's the CEO, very well-connected federally. Rick Ferris is the, he's our financial and financial strategic connection with governments, and he actually works with corporations and banks. We've got a strategic associate who's an education provider, particularly for women, youth, and indigenous applications. And then Scott Proudfoot, who's a strategic associate and diplomatic relations member to our group as well. So, the most important thing here is that we have connections directly with CMHC. Elizabeth Huckeluk is a former CMHC senior officer. She's also a strategic associate with BDLs International. And what I'd like to indicate is that it's not just CMHC and FMC government funding for housing that's available to you here. There's actually also all of the science and innovation side of things as well. This project is exceptionally well-aligned with the federal government's energy and carbon reduction strategy, and there's a number of departments that would be very interested in actually being part of this. And having said that, the other half of this equation is actually the corporate and philanthropic engagement that can take place. And that's one of the very first things that we would do. I would say that the number-one job that we do at BDLs International here is actually to help people say yes with confidence, and that's one of the things that we're known for. And to do that is basically to engage first with the people, and then to bring them through into the vision, and then get everybody together to start working through these, the options to bring the vision to reality. Because I can tell you right now that the LCCH co-op hits on a number of fronts, both on housing, social, innovation, we got technology development as well, including employment and attainable housing. So, I think, in conclusion, and sorry, it's a bit awkward because I can't actually, I can't see everything directly on my screen here. I would say the best way to start is to begin, and, you know, going, I think what the council might be looking for here is some confidence that the funds that may be loaned or made available to LCCH are recoverable. And I would say that we have, at BDLs, we have always been successful in gaining funds for our clients.
Thirty seconds.
Whether that's, thank you very much. Whether that's philanthropic, government, corporate, I think there's lots of opportunity here, and really, it's a momentum, it's a momentum-building exercise. First, we start with the public and philanthropic folks and forward-leaning corporations, and then work our way into those discussions with provincial and federal funders.
Okay.
Anyway, just wanted to open that up, and that's who we are, and that's what we do.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Ridge.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So, thank you so much for your delegation. I really appreciate you talking about the many benefits of the application package. My question, so I have two questions for you. The first is, do you and your organization have a lot of experience in advocating or working with co-op housing organizations?
Yes, and so I just fixed my screen too, so now I can see what I'm doing. Yes, so there are a number of, a number of projects that we've worked on in the past, both co-op and indigenous and regular housing as well. None of them, I would say, would be as innovative as this one. This one's quite forward-leaning, but we do have a lot of experience in small-to-large housing projects.
And through you, Your Worship, a follow-up question. So, I'm glad that you had mentioned none have been quite as ambitious or impressive in terms of the design and aim of this. I'm just curious, with the other co-op organizations that you worked with, have any of them asked for this level of funding or a similar level of funding with no assets to their name?
The amount that we're talking about here is, yes, actually, I'm just looking, just thinking back to one of the indigenous groups that we had worked with. So, there were, there's a way to bootstrap these things forward, but it does take a lot of, it introduces a lot of risk when you've got it, when you kind of do it that way. So, one of the key things is, it really is a bandwagon type of environment, and one little bit leads to the next, and gradually that gets quite a bit bigger. And that's the best way to reduce risk, in my opinion, is to basically start and just expand outwards from there. So, it's very difficult to actually launch some of these larger projects with zero money down, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, and through you. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your presentation. Could you speak a little bit more to the innovation piece that you referenced and to the community benefit from that innovation?
Certainly. And actually, you know, Kingston's, this is a very unique project in North America. The concept of having a bidirectional energy system between a co-op housing project and a vertical farm is relatively new. It's starting to be explored in the Netherlands, so they're actually leading the way a little bit on this one. The, yeah, I'm sorry, I've just, can you just restate the question again? I was going off on a technical angle, and I think your question was a bit different.
Yes, I was asking you to speak to the innovative part with regards to community benefit.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So, on the community benefit side of things, the integration of a vertical farm inside the building so that the co-op members can actually farm, that, the way it's designed right now is that we probably be looking at continuous, well, we will be looking at continuous employment for the co-op members, but also on the food production side, there's more than enough food produced within the, within the co-op itself to supply not only the co-op, but also several hundred households within the community as well. So, these systems are actually both leafy greens, root crops, protein crops. It's not just lettuce, so it's a whole basket of production. So, that's one of the innovative parts of the, of the, of the co-op, is that it does provide food for the residents. And if I may, we can also talk about the electric car, fleet car options, which are actually part of the proposal as well. And we know that car traffic is an issue for Kingston, so with a series of electric fleet cars incorporated into the building, that leads for lots of opportunity, not only for the residents in the, in the co-op to be able to get around in the attainable housing format, but also not introduce an excessive amount of cars and automobiles into the, into the community looking for parking.
Okay, thank you. And a second question, with regards to the cost to get the studies done, why are they so pricey, if you will? I know everything's gone up, but why in particular is this so pricey?
This particular, we're talking about the three points here to do with the business development, the, sort of, the business planning, the innovation integration, and then the philanthropic engagement? I'm assuming those are the three.
Yes, those are the three, and they're lumped in together, so if you could pull apart why they're so pricey.
Yes, so the business planning portion is actually, is a requirement of the housing co-op, of the housing funds. So, if you want to approach any of the housing funds, you must have a business plan, so that, that's part of it. On the science side, there is a significant amount of funding available for a project like this, but it requires some work, because the way things are right now is that most technologies are solid when you look at buildings. They're very solid, and they don't, they're not synergistic. So, when we look at the types of funds that are available, we need to be able to show that, you know, HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning from a vertical farm actually is very synergistic with heating, ventilation, air conditioning to a co-op. These kinds of studies actually help to bridge the gap between different programs to make both of them available to the co-op. So, there's some work, there's work to do there to basically show how that works, do all the literature review, get the engineering assessments done, and then to present those to the funders. And the last one on the philanthropic piece, the cost of this building is not out of line with what it actually contains and what it can do for the community, but the engagement side is best done personally, one-on-one, whether that's video or physically in person, and that takes a lot of effort. But the end result is that you've got engaged people on board who are willing and ready to help you continue on to the funding. So, engagement at that corporate level and in that philanthropic level is key, and that takes a lot of effort. Once we get into that area, then you have to write all of the grants, you have to write, you have to engage with the federal and provincial governments, and then you have to write those grants in the way that they need to see them. So, there's a lot of back and forth, but in the end, all that is to say that it reduces risk. So, the money upfront now actually reduces risk going down the road, because we are quite confident that there's, there's funding to be had from any of those avenues for this, for this project.
Counselor Sun.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Mr. Gibson, thank you for the presentation and giving us a little insight. And I saw the article, it's a big project, 115 million hours, published in the Big Standard, and 240-plus apartments and 14 stories. Your organization, and this particular organization is not for profit, starting a huge project which have no assets, no money in on their own hand, and starting with loan from the beginning to the end. And the money is been asked, is the people's money, is the taxpayers' money. If something happened down the road, because everything is in the air right now, it's not guaranteed that you will get loan from the federal government, which not presenting them a track record of such project to the federal government for the funding. So, my worry is, if we allow this money to go through for this study and this project do not go through, we will lose that $2.3 million, which can be used as of today for many other things. But my question is, how long will you will take to finish this project from the beginning to the end?
There is, well, first I'll just comment, yes, that's a, that's a fair comment to say that seems to be, you know, that is, that is a large amount of money. But it's not just one application with a yes or no. The way that, because of the way this building is designed and all the features that are in it, it's a diversification of income opportunities from federal, provincial, and when I say federal, it's not just one application, there are many branches of the federal government that are very interested in projects just like this one, even outside of the housing. So, if we look at the number of opportunities to actually ratchet, and I would use that analogy, to ratchet this project forward to success, there's, there's quite a few. Now, I think the question that you had asked is about how many years will this take? It really depends on how quickly we're able to start that ratcheting process. So, from, from now until, you know, construction could be two years, could be longer. It really depends on how quickly we're able to get that ball rolling. Getting the ball rolling with the initial line of credit that I think that you're referring to actually accelerates everything, because it's not necessary to have, it's not necessary to have collateral, if you will, physical assets in order to actually leverage the interest in this project forward with the government. It's not, because the very first thing that we're going to do is we're going to be talking with high net worth individuals and the philanthropic groups that exist in Canada here, and also the forward-leaning corporations. And I can tell you that the forward-leaning corporations are actually very interested in doing these kinds of projects because it features their, it features their technologies quite prominently. So, it's something that they can give back to the community, and it's actually in line with what they're, with what they're doing as a business. So, it's a diversified funding strategy approach, and the speed, which was your question, is dependent on how quickly we can start that momentum. So, notionally, we could start next week.
Follow-up question. So, if the proposed cost of this project now, 115 billion, is possibly, can go up if it's take two, three, four years for now. The other part B to this question, have you witnessed such projects going through, this scale project from the federal government before?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of the question? I just had a little bit of interference on my screen.
Is the project this organization proposing at this scale, have you seen funding coming through from the government, sorry, federal or provincial government for such a big project in the past?
In totality, yes, I could, I could say that.
So, my worry is, if we allow this money to go through for this study, and this project do not go through, we will lose that $2.3 million, which can be used as of today for many other things. But my question is, how long will you will take to finish this project from the beginning to the end?
There is, well, first I'll just comment, yes, that's a, that's a fair comment to say, that seems to be, you know, that is, that is a large amount of money, but it's not just one application with a yes or no, the way that, because of the way this building is, is designed and all the features that are in it, it's a diversification of, of income opportunities from federal, provincial, and when I say federal, it's not just one application, there are many branches of the federal government that we, that are very interested in projects just like this one, even outside of the housing. So, if we look at the number of opportunities to actually ratchet, and I would use that analogy, to ratchet this project forward to success, there's, there's quite a few. Now, I think the, the question that you had asked is about how, how many years will this take? It really depends on how quickly we're able to start that ratcheting process. So, from, from now until, you know, construction could be two years, could be longer, it really depends on how quickly we're able to, to get that ball rolling. Getting the ball rolling with the initial line of credit that I think that you're referring to, actually accelerates everything, because it's not necessary to have, it's not necessary to have collateral, if you will, physical assets, in order to actually leverage the interest in this project forward with the government. It's not, because the very first thing that we're going to do is we're going to be talking with high net worth individuals in the philanthropic groups that exist in Canada here, and also the forward-leaning corporations. And I can tell you that the forward-leaning corporations are actually very interested in doing these kinds of projects, because it features their, it features their technologies quite prominently, so it's something that they can give back to the community, and it's actually in line with what they're, with what they're doing, doing as a business. So, it's a diversified funding strategy approach, and the speed, which was your question, is dependent on how quickly we can start that, that momentum. So, notionally, we could start next week.
Follow-up question. So, if the proposed cost of this project now, 115 billion, is possibly, can go up if it's, take two, three, four years for now. The other part B to this question, have you witnessed such projects going through, this scale project from the federal government before?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of the question? I just had a little bit of interference on my screen.
Is the project this organization proposing at this scale, have you seen funding coming through from the government, sorry, federal or provincial government for such a big project in the past?
In totality, yes, I could, I could say that with some confidence, that there has been building projects that have been in the $100 million range. That's not unusual for an apartment building or a co-op building like this. What we're talking about right now, though, is the incorporation of a lot of green technologies within this building, which are directly aligned with the federal, the federal mandate to, to go this direction for housing. So, it, the, the cost of the building with respect to the technologies that are in it are not out of line, and there have been large building projects funded previously that are in the same, in the same ballpark.
Okay, next is Counsel Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. So, I'm just wondering, because I've heard, I've heard you mention significant amounts of funding a few times, but I don't think I've heard a dollar amount, so I was wondering if you could, understanding that you don't know exactly, but could you ballpark or give us a range of what kind of funding you think might be available?
So, through, through CMHC and the other housing funds, you're, this is not, this kind of application is not, not out of line, so the $100 million is, on a loan, is not out of line. When we're looking at grants, different kinds of grants exist, they can go from $1 million to $10 million for different aspects of the, of the building. For example, tying the electric vehicles in the facility or in the co-op to the grid as part of a, of a pilot for Kingston, because I know that's one of the, one of the items that was on, the climate leadership strategy, was to, how do we integrate some of these things? You know, there's, on, on that particular aspect, there's up to $5 million to actually look at, you know, how that could be done. So, when you start to break it down, you're looking at 1 to 5 million dollars for various aspects, the $100 million for the CMHC is, that, that's part of the loan. For the grants, you, when we start talking federally on the green building area, those grants can be significant, they started at the tens of millions of dollars. So, it's really about engaging the people early and quickly, and building the momentum to actually get this, to get the ball rolling, if you will, for that. So, $100 million is not, is not out of the, not out of the question in terms of, of loans, Development Bank of Canada, there's all, there's Infrastructure Bank of Canada, sorry, there's, there's a number of, number of areas where the dollars are in the millions.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Shaves.
Thank you. Question, was this request endorsed by the Board of Directors prior to coming to city staff or the report being written?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not.
So, I don't, I don't think that's a question, I don't think that would be a question for the delegation, Counsel Shaves.
Because he's on the board, is he not?
No, he's not on the board.
Okay, there, never mind.
Counsel Shinni.
Through you. So, you mentioned that you had experience in co-ops and all that, so seeing that this one is 150 million plus, give or take, have you, what's the largest project funding that you needed or that you, you've been involved in previously, just to have like a, something to compare to of what your experience is?
In, in the, the, yes, a fair question, in the, the 40 to 50 million dollar range for, for housing, and of course, the, yeah, as, as I was saying, the, the, that, the 115 million is not, is not out of line for the, the size and scope of that building. The process, though, to gather that, that support is the same, whether it's a $50 million building or whether it's a 100, 100 million dollar building.
Okay, thank you. So, seeing that other well-established organizations that have, say, like many properties and have, have like been in this field for a very long time, who also struggle to have, to get funding from the CMHC, even like just $10 million, for somebody who has the experience and they're being told that they don't have enough experience in the, in the field, what makes you think that $100 million is actually feasible when people who have been in this field for a very long time struggle to get this kind of funding?
That's a very good question, because, you know, one of the, one of the motivations for our, our project here was the Federal Housing Minister asking municipalities to be more bold in their, in their suggestions and proposals for what could be the housing of the future. So, when we're looking at that, and as I was mentioning, the, the green bill, the energy reduction, the carbon reduction, the climate leadership, you know, risk mitigation on climate, all of these things align with, well, actually aligns with the Kingston strategies, aligns with the Antero strategies, aligns with the federal strategies, and it directly answers the call of the minister saying, we want bold strategies to help solve the housing crisis, and this attainable housing project embodies all of, all of those, those things. So, as a showpiece, it is actually, is the only one actually in Canada that actually has all of these features in it. So, from putting, you know, all of these, these technologies and features and benefits to the community together in one attainable housing structure, this is something that we believe will actually attract the attention of the federal government on many levels and in many departments.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Gibson, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you. So, just before we move on, are there any other delegations to be added from the floor? Counsel Tozo.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, I've got an additional delegation I'd like to add. Do I read it out? Okay, there we go.
Okay, moved by Counsel Tozo, second by Counsel Ridge, that we waive our procedural bylaw to allow Gavin Anderson from the Kingston District Labor Council to speak to counsel with respect to the council procedural bylaw updates. All those in favor? opposed, and that's carried. Counsel Ridge.
Through you, Your Worship, I also have a delegation I would like to add, please.
Moved by Counsel Ridge, second by Counsel Tozo, that we waive our procedural bylaw to allow Vicky Schmoka to appear before counsel, also to speak to council procedural bylaw updates. Okay, all those in favor? opposed, and that's carried. Any other delegations to add? Okay, all right, so we will move ahead then with our next delegation, I'll invite Gavin Anderson from the Kingston District Labor Council to speak to counsel with respect to the procedural bylaw updates.
Good evening, and thank you for recognizing our delegation to city hall, to city council. My name is Gavin Anderson, I'm a retired member of OPSU Local 460, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the Kingston and District Labor Council. The KDLC has 40 affiliated bargaining units representing approximately 10,000 members who live and work in and around Kingston. The Labor Council and its associated bargaining units are democratic institutions. We value member participation and strive for transparency and inclusiveness. We do not believe that the proposed procedural bylaw amendment serve the interests of democracy, particularly with respect to public participation in the form of delegations before council. The amendments before you are the result of a discretionary assessment of the existing 2021 bylaw made by staff well in advance of the mandatory five-year review. We could not find a rationale for this review other than we are, quote, midway through the council term, close quote. The methodology cited in the staff report is a, quote, broad scan of 24 comparator and larger municipalities, close quote. The report is not supported by any thorough analysis of data collected through this survey. We are left to wonder what precipitated this rushed amendment. This whole operation has the feel of a solution in search of a problem. As elected city councillors, you are the stewards of our municipal democracy. No level of government and no elected representatives are closer to constituents. The ability to hear, to appear and be heard before city committees and council itself is a cornerstone of civic participation, it should be considered sacred. You have heard from a previous delegation many of the problems the community has with the proposed procedural bylaw amendments. I'm going to highlight one. The proposal states that C A L consider reports will not go before a standing committee and cannot be addressed by delegations to council meetings. This means that major policy initiatives and operational decisions will never afford the public access, access to direct participation. The staff report before you did not go to a standing committee, although it could have and should have. This is the public's first and only opportunity to weigh in on a proposal that, in the name of efficiency and streamlining, will limit public participation in city business. Under the proposed bylaw amendment, from January 1st forward, there will be zero opportunity for residents to address their concerns on this or any other staff-initiated proposals that are prohibited from going to committee, or like this amendment, skip committee consideration. Democracy is sometimes a messy and time-consuming operation, and on important issues, providing space for concerned residents to participate directly, to be seen and heard, and to register support or opposition is critical to an open and inclusive city government. Adopting these amendments on two weeks' notice with thin supporting documentation and without committee due diligence does a disservice to democratic principles and calls into question council's commitment to an accessible and transparent procedure. It also robs the city of valuable insight and experience from citizens and residents. At the very least, this proposal must be sent to the Administrative Policies Committee, complete with a full rationale and analysis for the proposed amendments for public scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Okay, say none, thank you very much. And now we'll move to our fifth and final delegation, we'll invite Vicky Schmoka to speak to counsel again with respect to the council procedural bylaw updates.
Could I ask you to give me a 90-second warning, please? Yes, and could I ask the clerk to come here, please? Sorry, this has a PowerPoint on it.
Okay, you do need to send it in advance.
I got it done a few minutes ago, and this is for everybody at council, please.
Okay, I'll have to give you a few moments here.
Okay, sorry. It's just three slides. I can start talking once you get. Are you coming back? Or am I going to find my own presentation here?
Chris, it's back, we have the presentation on page.
Okay. Okay, it is the PowerPoint, it's not that one, maybe it's that one. Just look for what, what I modified today, please. Hopefully it's there. Hopefully not everyone is seeing my personal stuff. Sorry about that. All right, well, it just means people at home won't be able to see it, because I put it in the document that I sent to everybody. So, okay, I'm gonna start now, thank you very much. Mayor Patterson and members of council, I am here out of my concern about the procedural bylaw, and I would like to speak up for standing committees as a first step. I circulated to you a report that two of us drew from the internet on how the standing committees are functioning in council right now, and you'll see that the Administrative Policies Committee in 2023 met, had six meetings for a total of less than six hours to discuss all the business, all the administrative policies of the city, and there are no statistics for 2024, because minutes have not yet been posted, because meetings have been canceled and the meetings haven't happened. For Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee, you didn't get a copy, there were enough for you too. Arts, Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee, in 2023, there were five meetings, totaling three hours, and in 2024, again, the statistics aren't available. With respect to the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee, in 2023, there were four meetings totaling five and a half hours, and in 2024, again, we don't have statistics, because the minutes aren't being presented. Why does this matter? Well, I'll give you two examples. One is something that happened when I was on council, which was there was a big debate about whether Princess Street should be closed for one Saturday a year for the promenade, and there were people from the Downtown Business Association that objected, and there were people from the community who wanted to see it happen, and it went to Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee because of the road closing aspect, and there was this debate, and there was conversation there, and I believe we had two meetings about that particular proposal, and there was a member of the community that went around and asked every retailer on Princess Street whether they wanted a promenade, and came back with the finding that, yes, like 80% wanted it. What happened? The promenade happened, now we see four a year, and I would admit to you that that is how the committee process works. You have discussion at committee, you have input from people who know, who have different perspectives, who can educate, inform, share, consult, bring forward ideas, and that has happened this council term with the Williamsville cycling lanes. Now, I'm a cyclist, I know what I like in infrastructure, I know what I don't like, but I cannot tell you what the best infrastructure is. There are people in the community who can, Kingston Coalition of Active Transportation are experts, they're, they go to conferences, they read books, they interact with other people in other cities, that's something you can't do, I know how much work you have to do, like, there's a lot, you have to rely on the expertise in the community to help you develop the best policy for the city. So, when I look at the standing committee activities and the lack of participation by some members of council, I'm really disappointed, because you're not, you're not benefiting from people speaking to you and, and sharing their ideas, it's not all about complaining, it's about building a better city. So, you know, that's my, my speech for standing committees. It's been raised with you that the idea that information reports should not be discussed, no delegations for information reports, that's one of the things that's being barred by this proposal, this change to the procedural bylaw. And information reports, I can understand that some are not suitable for discussion at council, maybe a delegation shouldn't come and say, you made a mistake giving a contract to person X instead of person Y, or company X instead of company Y.
90 seconds.
Thank you, that's just in your materials, so you're informed, because you should know where the city money is being spent, but when there's something like greenhouse gas emissions report, or the KEDCO report, or Tourism Kingston, or Municipal Accessibility Plan, or the Population, Housing and Workforce Updates, maybe you do want to hear from people who have some comments or questions or want to know more. So, I think that that's really important. You know, barring people from speaking is just, just not right, and I'd like to give you another example of how I think the, this proposal is not getting it, like, the whole world politics that was mentioned by a previous delegation, you know, we've lost soldiers in war theaters, as we like to say, in different parts of the world, that, that policy bans you from having a delegation speak to that, or from expressing sympathy for that, or, or anything, because that's a world, world event. I think that policy hasn't been refined, that's why you should go back to the committee and, and ask the committee to have people talk about that.
30 seconds.
What's the appropriate way to avoid spending a lot of time at council on matters that really are difficult to resolve, and maybe there's real fractions in the community, but leadership gives people a chance to say what's important, and I just want to say that you have a right to send this back to committee. If you look at the very last page of what I circulated, you have, one of the mandates is to consider such similar matters as may be directed by council.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Okay, thank you, are there any questions? Counsel Ridge.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Thank you for providing this document detailing the minutes and the amount of time that's spent at each committee. Is it, I'm trying, I'm trying to determine, are you, are you stating that because the meetings are shorter, that the quality of the decision-making is less? I'm just trying to understand.
I'm saying the meeting, right now, standing committees usually meet over, only every second month, so you're not feeding into the council process, and also several committee meetings have been canceled, so it's not only the lack of time and consideration at committees, it's also the fact they're not really happening. So, you know, you're, you're discussing policy all the time here, all the time, and I think, you know, the Labor Council delegate made the point that you're discussing tonight a very important project to the community, should this really innovative housing project that really could draw money into the city and draw attention to the city be funded with a small amount of city money to get it rolling, and that should have come to committee, because then you know what kind of community support there is. Now, there are 13 of you left to sort of go, do we like this, do we not like this, do you know enough about it? I think you would have found that if it had gone to committee, you would have heard from people who know about green infrastructure, who know about car sharing, who know about co-ops and a farming co-op and how to make co-ops and a farming co-op and how to make a farming co-op work, or who maybe say, you know, "We heard this happened in Detroit and it really didn't work." But you know nothing, well, you know, sorry. You know something. You don't know all you could know if a robust committee process had taken place.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Just a question, because the landscape has changed in council, and we get a lot of information, not just from committees, and not just from emails, and not just from delegations, but I think I speak for myself and most of councils, we're also in and day in, day out. Because I want to sort of just ask your question, like, now with the widespread use of social media, that we get messaged and emailed constantly, do you think that also assuages some fears that we're being less democratic than just having delegations speak up? Because I think that there's a component here where things have kind of changed, where delegations to council have a value, but there's other ways to contact us. And trust me, people contact us.
Well, let me say that the social media world is full of people criticizing each other, trashing each other, making negative comments about each other. The thing about having a committee that meets and talks about an idea is people have to listen to each other. They have to hear the other point of view, they have to hear that, you know, really, okay, maybe car sharing does work. I don't want to share a car with someone, but I can see that other people do. You know, you're informed by other people, you learn from other people. And I think social media, yes, you might be inundated with cryptic comments and sarcastic comments, but that's not dialogue. That doesn't allow you to be a leader on behalf of our community. That just fills you with yap from different people. And that's why committees matter, because if you want to formulate policy that's good for the city, you have to listen to the people of the city. And listening on social media is not encouraging a collective move forward. So that's why the committees are a way to bring people together to, I mean, that's what happened with the promenade. You know, there were people on council who were very against it, but once they heard other people talk about what they think they could do for their business, and I have to say, the head of the DBIA at the time was against it, and she had the best retail year ever from that first promenade. And that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had committee work and sorting it out and people saying this needs to happen and it's a good idea. So, you know, the committees bring people together, and I think this idea that "Get Involved Kingston" solves that problem, it doesn't bring people together to talk to each other. It doesn't bring people into a room virtually or in person to hear ideas and differing ideas and how to resolve those ideas. And it doesn't inform staff. You're leaving all the work to staff. You're relying on staff. And, you know, this is one of my problems with this report. It says, "We talked to twenty-four municipalities, we did a scan of twenty-four municipalities." Have you seen that scan? I haven't seen that scan. That scan was never on the internet. It cites a few cities. Well, the big cities like Hamilton, Toronto, Ottawa, they have full-time meetings all day of standing committee. They're different from Kingston. So I would like to see those comparators, and if this had gone to committee, you would have been able to see those comparators, because someone would have said, "Could I please find out what cities you scanned and tell us more about them? Where do they have a policy about international events not being allowed to be on a council agenda? I don't know. Do you know? Do you know what other of the twenty-four municipalities have a policy like you're being asked to put in place?" And I think the community had a right to know. Because I think that's a pretty important policy to say, "We're never going to allow anybody to, you know, any of you to come forward with a motion about a spontaneous world event." Well, a spontaneous world event might be a Kingstonian climbing Mount Everest. Maybe you want to talk, maybe you want a motion of condolences, or congratulation, sorry about that, or condolences about a soldier who dies. Banned, barred. I don't know. I don't think that's a sensible policy. I think there's a place for a policy. I think you could refine that and find a better way of expressing it, but you've just let the sledgehammer approach creep into this procedural bylaw. Take control. Get better informed. Ask this to go back to the committee for a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry to those at home that my PowerPoint didn't show up.
Okay, so we have no further, okay, thank you. So we have no further delegations this evening. We have a briefing, which we'll do shortly, but no other briefings at this point in the agenda. Are there any petitions to present? If none, we have no special motions, we have no deferred motions, so we will move right to report number eighty from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Shaves, that report eighty from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so first, we have a briefing from Tywin Thomas of the Commercial Land Review and Strategic Directions.
Can we just skip something? Good evening, everyone. My name is Tywin Thomas. I'm a senior project manager with Urban Metrics. We do development, municipal strategy, land economics, and market research. My background personally is in public economics and sustainable development. We've just recently undertaken the Commercial Land Needs Review and Strategic Directions, and this is an important background information for the development of the new official plan. So tonight, I'm here to address four main areas. I'm not going to reiterate the entirety of the very lengthy report and the staff report, but I wanted to focus on some of the key trends and the areas of emphasis in commercial development. While I'll do a brief backrounder on the kind of technical aspects of the study, we'll talk a little bit about the commercial market context in Kingston and where the opportunities that can be kind of seized through this official plan are, and then we'll address any questions or concerns that are kind of left lingering at the end. So I wanted to start by conveying, you know, from an outsider's perspective, someone that's kind of coming into the community to do work, the significance of commercial planning. I think there's, in the past, been a kind of an idea that, okay, commercial planning is the areas where we go to purchase things. And that's increasingly not the case. The policies that commercial lands are influenced by shape now where we work, increasingly where we live, with mixed-use development kind of bridging the gap between residential areas and commercial areas. And then where we play, where, you know, you take your kids to classes, they play sports, maybe they do karate. Like, these are all kind of commercial activities that take place on commercial lands. And Kingston has a wealth of these economic, social, and environmental assets, and at this juncture of time, there's a lot of opportunities for Kingston to kind of seize and follow through on the vision that council's kind of been articulating and working towards for quite some time, and that staff are hard at work on. So one of the unique opportunities that I'm referencing is that, for a city of this size, Kingston is one of few that has an opportunity to pursue both a greenfield development program and really capture a lot of the benefits of intensification through an already well-established urban area. Getting to do both of those through the same official plan is a pretty unique opportunity, and will be increasingly scarce in Ontario moving forward. So there's a lot of things that you can do, there's a lot of policies that you can put in place to have more efficient, multipurpose use of land that delivers social, environmental, and fiscal benefits. One of the main benefits of intensification being that you can have a lot more of a property tax revenue from a particular site, you can accomplish kind of more given the same finite amount of land. So on the screen here are some examples of, from mid-sized cities throughout North America, of kind of new approaches to suburban commercial development, and some of the things that are, you know, fleshed out in more detail in the report, but kind of represent opportunities for Kingston to take a more modern and divergent path and not continue replicating the kind of suburban commercial developments that have been seen throughout the past, you know, decades across North America. So as I mentioned, Kingston is also blessed with a lot of heritage, streetscapes, buildings, and a downtown that is already attractive. Kingston is going to experience a lot of intensification. This is, you know, something that's been directed by the province, and this is something that we, you know, can say with certainty is going to continue to happen. And, you know, since I was visiting friends in University of Queens, there's a lot more buildings now than there were then. And so adding more residents to the city's already attractive areas and growing communities, you know, will bring growing pains. We know this. I live in downtown Toronto, you can't drive anywhere right now, and that's just kind of something that we've somewhat accepted for the meantime. But in order to capture the value and truly deliver on an improved quality of life and better commercial spaces, there are also examples, many of which are detailed in the report, of policies that can be put into the official plan that can do that and deliver better commercial places rather than kind of shell spaces, that can maintain and build on and define what the new character of Kingston is going to be over, you know, quite the long timeline that an official plan sets out. So this is the more kind of technical content here, which is, you know, without repeating everything, the market growth, so that's both population and growth in incomes that's fueling like overall market growth, is expected to support approximately 1.47 million square feet of new commercial space by 2051. So this space, based on, you know, a variety of assumptions on density, is going to, is expected to require 57.4 hectares of commercial land. Based on our kind of analysis of the city's amount of commercial land, there's 31.2 hectares of vacant land, which results in a shortfall of 26.2 hectares. So there are opportunities to pursue higher density commercial and mixed-use development to kind of reduce this estimated land need. We assume, for example, a 20% lot coverage ratio, and you can obviously implement policies that go beyond that. But in general, there are three key commercial planning priorities that come out of this, which are planning for new commercial spaces in complete communities in the greenfield area, which is taking a more modern approach than has been taken in the past by many municipalities. There's enhancing or retaining the existing high quality and providing new high-quality spaces through redevelopment. We've seen in cities across Canada where a high-rise building will replace what was formerly a commercial block, and there's actually a reduction in the amount of commercial space that exists on the site. And given Kingston's kind of commercial real estate market, the relatively low vacancies and relatively high rents, it's important to make sure that space isn't kind of being eliminated from the supply. And the third key priority to plan for is accommodating these kind of heavy or quasi-industrial commercial uses that are really key supporters of industrial areas or areas of employment, but maybe don't fit within especially the new provincial policy statement framework for what uses are allowed within an employment area. So finding a home for those uses is going to be key moving forward. So in order to balance these three priorities, the official plan will have to address some kind of dynamic trends, both in the larger economy and in commercial real estate market. So the first is simplifying the complexities of mixed-use projects. Building a shell structure in a field is typically much simpler than adapting a space within a tighter urban context. And that is something that needs to be kind of well-thought-out in both the official plan and zoning bylaw. A second is transitioning the use of office space, so that's allowing the repurposing and reinvention of office properties that either the users, the tenants, or both, are seeking to do something different with than they've been doing in the past. How that affects commercial space is it changes where people spend their time. If you have a bunch of office workers, that is going to potentially produce demand for lunch spots, for convenience shopping, for shopping on the way home, whereas if everyone is still at home, that changes where you're potentially going to be making those purchases. In addition, one pressure that's being seen across Canada, across North America, is curb competition. You may have heard of this, is adapting roadways and sidewalks to new ways of shopping, traveling, and sitting at bars and restaurants. And I'm sure that there have been many conversations here about on-street patios, and that's kind of something that doesn't seem to be going away, and something that needs to be kind of continually planned for in the future. The last thing here is something that's not quite as talked about, which is the concept of category blending. In Canada, this is quite prevalent, as we have, you know, several large retailers that kind of seem to be ever-expanding the breadth of products that they're offering. And that complicates zoning bylaws and land use planning frameworks, because you can't quite so neatly say, "This is where a grocery store goes, this is where a retailer goes," because the same store may offer kind of products that fit into a whole, a wide range of categories. So the good news is that Kingston can leverage successful approaches throughout other municipalities. So these four examples here kind of demonstrate the different approaches, and these are all elaborated on in the report. Blend different approaches needed to deliver successful mid-density greenfield communities, such as the University District in Calgary, which is in the top left. Blending kind of the old and the new is another challenge. Creating new, modern identities, and then adding gentle density to existing properties. So this bottom-right picture is from a mall, actually, in Surrey, DC, where they converted a large portion of the parking lot into a new mixed-use community with mid-rise condos and retained pretty much the entirety of the commercial space. So these are some additional examples of blending the old and new. Newcastle in the UK is a really great example of taking industrial properties and transitioning them into a mixed-use community. And through investments in public space, such as at Placeville Marie in Montreal, you can kind of bridge those gaps between what was previously a single-use commercial and single-use residential, and bring both together into a community that is going to be a lot more dynamic, there's going to be a lot more people spending time in it, which is going to support local businesses and continue to have a dynamic local economy. So I'd like to end the presentation before questions with kind of just reiterating some of the key strategic directions and policy recommendations in the report. So the first and foremost, we recommend that the city consider ways to increase land use and zoning flexibility. There's examples of this kind of across Canada. Edmonton is a really good one. I think they eliminated about two-thirds of their land use classes in their official plan, and were able to allow individuals, developers, and then the market, through all of the existing, you know, checks and balances that they have in place, to be a little bit more innovative and flexible in what they're proposing. Second is create a new land use designation for these heavy commercial uses that I mentioned. So this is things like, it might be a truck sales, it might be any other form of machinery, it could even be like a lumberyard. Sometimes they're not permitted in, certainly not within a business park designation or with others, and they're commercial uses, but they also aren't going to locate on Princess Street in the downtown. So finding a home for these type of uses that are kind of key accessories to the larger players in the economy is really important for not so much the retail shopping, but for the broader economy as a whole. More specifically, for what's considered as traditional commercial, is we recommend formalizing the local commercial designations. Kingston was a leader in Ontario, certainly, in terms of allowing small stores to open in residential areas as of right throughout all residential areas in the city, and that's a really strong start. But given we're expecting higher levels of density, and especially gentle densification of these neighborhoods, we recommend kind of expanding that local commercial designation, subject to, you know, additional research and seeing how that would fit within the entire planning framework. We also recommend increasing the minimum and maximum densities for greenfield commercial uses, partially to kind of address that 26-hector shortfall in the estimated amount of commercial land required. Simply increasing the densities, obviously with the caveat of having slightly less parking, is going to allow more land to be used more efficiently. And lastly, we recommend that Kingston consider building on its previous work in density by design with a Made in Kingston retail design manual. There are some really strong examples from cities across North America of collectively coming together and saying, "This is what we want our commercial spaces to look like, this is how we want them to integrate into our communities, these are the best practices," and almost serving as an educational tool for developers who maybe aren't used to approaching building projects in this kind of way. Maybe they're used to building single-family homes, and they're a little bit more, they need more guidance in terms of what a good, high-quality commercial space is that is going to be home to a successful local business. That's all from me. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, again, just a reminder that we will switch to our electronic voting. So we'll move to clause two, Commercial Land Review and Strategic Directions. Okay, so we will call the vote on clause two. Okay, so we will call the vote on clause two. Okay, I guess it carried, all right? Good to know. Oh, okay, thank you, all right. Okay, very good. Okay, on to clause number three, Municipal Support for Carbon Storage Through Enhanced Rock Weathering Program. Council Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I have many questions through you to staff about it. I don't understand why this didn't go through a committee, like, this is over $200,000, and it's a technology we've never heard of before, and I also don't really understand the benefits. So why didn't we bring this to committee?
Sue Hurd.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that's more of a procedural question. Councilor Ossanik, so typically we bring reports to council when there are major decisions on financial expenditures. So you'll recall, for example, the Aquatic Centre came to council, it was a major expenditure, this one, $200,000. Those budgetary decisions typically lie with council, and it's also why we bring affordable housing reports directly to council, because they do require a financial contribution.
Thank you. Question about our soil. This liming, right, will increase the pH, will it not? And isn't our soil in Kingston already alkaline? Like, I don't understand why we're looking at increasing the soil pH when we already are on the alkaline side in, in the Kingston area.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor.
In agricultural practice, the application of fertilizer tends to decrease the soil pH to a point where it needs to be amended, so traditionally farmers have used lime for that purpose, so that it increases the pH back to a, back to a place where it's, it's supposed to be for healthy crop. So this Wolastinite material does something similar. It's not the, it's not the primary intention of the Wolastinite, to provide that pH buffering, but it, it provides the same service as lime, and also the liming process has its own carbon dioxide or carbon footprint, and the Wolastinite application would not only capture carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and store it, but it would offset and avoid that additional carbon dioxide emission from the liming process.
Through you, your worship. My next question is, like, the three potential sites for city-owned land. It's not agriculture at the airport, Grass Creek, and I don't understand CISO and Wilma Graham Parks, like, are those names of parks? And closed landfill sites, I don't think we're going to be planting trees or agriculture on them, so I don't know why we'd be looking at amending those, those lands.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the intention of including city lands is not to obviously promote agriculture. We don't do that on our lands. It's, it's simply to place Wolastinite product and gain the benefit of the carbon storage.
Okay, thank you. Another question I have is, like, exactly how are we going to see if it's beneficial? It says that the two-year startup period, once it's completed, it's expected that the local agriculture operators will be able to confirm the benefits provided by the amendment. So are they going to be measuring their pH today and then measuring it at the end of year one and the end of year two? Like, how are we going to know what benefits were received?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. Two ways we're going to confirm the benefits of this program. The first one is the benefit to the farmers, and if the farmers do not see the pH adjustments and the productivity performance that they, that they want, then they're not going to use the product on a go-forward, on a go-forward basis. The second aspect of benefit that we need to verify is the actual carbon capture that's taking place on any, any particular application, and that is done on behalf of Canadian Wolastinite by a company called Undo Carbon. They're a third-party company that will do the scientific verification on each application plot to make sure that the, the stated carbon capture is actually happening, and that's very important for them, because they are going to market and sell their carbon credits from this, and the purchasers of those credits have to have confidence that the carbon storage has actually occurred. So it's quite a rigorous verification and monitoring process that has to go through to develop those certificates that can be sold.
Okay, thank you. So my last question is just more details from the local agricultural operators, our farmers. So they are going to measure their pH today and then measure their productivity this fall, and then measure their productivity over the next two years? Like, how are we going to know scientifically from the farmers that this was beneficial? Like, it's got to be like a rigid scientific tracking. Because this is taxpayer money from the Environmental Fund going towards this private operation.
The chemistry of the soil will be verified by Undo Carbon as part of their carbon capture verification process. So that chemistry part is, is taken care of through that verification process. Whether or not the individual agricultural operators see the, the productivity benefits, it's up to the, up to them individually, and as I said, if they're not seeing it, then they're not going to continue with the program.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilor Emes.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Just a couple of quick questions in regards to the, the two-year funding allotment. So we're subsidizing basically five, five of the $10, is that correct, for each tonnage? From, from what I'm reading, is there a cap per farm on this, or is it trying to get as many farms as possible? Because each, I mean, we've got very large farms in the area, and then we've got some family-owned farms. So I'm just wondering, is there a, a way to scale that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have not gone into the details of, of caps on how many farms. It's simply an acres calculus, and the, and the maximum that can be provided is up to the, the $200,000 of subsidy, which, as you said, is $5 per ton, towards transportation costs that goes from the city to the, the farmer that's receiving the material.
And staff have obviously met with the operator. Staff believe that the threshold of the 40,000 tons can be met to support farm operations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's, there's more than enough Wolastinite product to meet that. We're hopeful that that demand materializes, and that's the demand that the Canadian Wolastinite believes is present within Kingston that they can, that they can satisfy. If the demand is less than that, then the, the output from the city is going to be less.
Sorry, I may have asked that question wrong. I, I know that there's enough supply there, it's a question, do they have the ability to deliver the supply?
The answer to that is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stroff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. So I just wanted to make a comment on this as well. I, I feel, I am supportive of this, because I'm probably no more than most of council about this, having been involved in, in several conversations, and I don't know why there is not a report, or a little more elaborate report for us, because this is actually a very exciting venture, and I think my opinion and my evaluation is it's a, a very appropriate use of these funds, and, and so I, I can't apologize on behalf of them, because I think you should probably have more information, but I am very confident in the establishment of this program, and I'm very confident of the, the investment of other countries. The Undo is investing in Canada right now, and economic development, I believe, is very supportive of this, though I, I don't, I, I had thought that there would be more for us. So if, you know, if you want to defer it, I understand it, but I would speak 100% in confidence of this seed money being very fruitful. I know that the farming industry in our area is embracing it, and even in the small farms and, and, so this is an amazing, amazing product to have this mine in our city. We share it with Leeds, we're right on the line, and it's a phenomenal place and opportunity to achieve world-renowned accomplishments in, in carbon capture and in agricultural benefits. So, yep, there has to be, I think, better communication, so I, I'm confused by that, but I will say that I, I can support this, but I, I do understand that we all should have maybe been better informed, and I don't know how this happened, but this is a good thing, and give it a chance, and we'll see significantly positive results, I believe.
Okay, I thank you. Councilor Glenn.
Thank you, and through you. I agree, it would have been better to get more information, but Councilor Osterhoff spoke to me about this probably almost a year ago, so just from doing a little bit of homework on the matter, I, I do think that this would be beneficial long-term. I do share Councilor Ossanik's concerns that we measure it properly, and it seems that staff has confirmed that we will at least get good carbon measurements, and of course, it's up to the individual farmers to then make the most of this. So I'm going to support this, and just suggest that for the future, maybe a little bit more information so that we can more easily make these, these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else on the list, we will call the vote on clause three. And that carries by a vote of 12 to one. Councilor Ossanik opposed. Okay, on to clause four, Council Procedural Bylaw Updates. Councilor Glenn.
Thank you, through you. I would like to put a motion to defer this forward, please.
Can I just see that? Okay. Subdued by Councilor Glenn, seconded by Councilor Osterhoff, to defer and refer clause four to the number 14th 2024 Administrative Policies Committee meeting to allow for further consideration and public comment on the report. It's been duly moved and seconded. Councilor Glenn, you have the floor. Just a reminder that a motion to defer, we have one minute to be able to speak to it. Time, place, or purpose. Councilor Glenn.
Thank you. I think we've heard from a number of concerned constituents that this has not been given enough thought and consideration, given that this impacts how we interact with the community. I think it's worth taking the extra time to do this, so I'm hopeful that you'll support this. This doesn't mean that we won't accept some of the recommendations that are already before us, but let's make sure there's no unintended consequences out of changing these procedures. I think that's contingent upon us to do in consideration of the constituents and ourselves, to be quite frank. So it's a little extra step, but I think it's well worth taking, and I hope that you'll support the deferral. Thank you.
Councilor Stroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. So we've got one minute, I will speak quickly. I'm going to vote no on this, for the same reason I always vote no on deferrals. We were elected to make decisions. Sometimes those decisions are hard, sometimes those decisions are difficult, we have to live with those decisions. I don't like deferring again, again, and again. We will just be back here after this committee meeting with the same decision-making that we will have with maybe a few amendments, maybe here, maybe there. I'm, if you don't like these bylaws, don't vote for them. But I'm voting no on this deferral. I encourage my fellow councillors to vote no on this deferral. We can get back to the main motion, then decide if this is what we want to do and how we want to govern this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I see these policies as living documents. If we were putting this in stone, I would agree, yes, we need to make sure everything's perfect. However, council always has, always has the option to revisit. We can come back to things if we implement things and they're not working right. We have it within our power to be able to make those changes. So I am not in favor of deferring, I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Councilor Stroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was pleased to second this, because I think discussion is good. I think, I think we have heard a good rationale and reasons why we ought to, to move it to committee. I think, I think the community needs to be respected in these, in these situations and included, and we have, we've heard the good reasons why, and I think we have to just let the committee look at it, and then we can say, hey, we've had a pause, you know, just a quiet pause of making sure we've done this right and we've done right for our community. So there's no rush, I don't think. I think sometimes haste unnecessarily will, will regret that. So let's, let's kind of make sure we have it right and be happy to pass it in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. I think we also need to listen to the community a little bit more. They've raised some interesting questions that I think we should look at. A little more information is always helpful. And if, just a question to staff, if we were to pass this tonight, like, say, if it were to pass tonight, are we allowed to revisit this within the next year without a supermajority, or do we need a supermajority to reconsider it?
Madam Perk.
If there were changes that were necessary that were brought forward by staff, it would not require a reconsideration. If there were changes that were requested by council, then a reconsider, a motion of reconsideration would be required.
Okay, so to Councilor Stephen, it seems that we don't actually have that power, only staff would have that power to revisit this within the next year if we were to pass this now. So I think it's important that we think about it a little longer before we do this, because I would hate, I think there's some good stuff in that, right? And I don't want to vote against it, have it fail, when we could actually just improve it, and just take a little bit more time to do that. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Councilor Emes.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. The council, the council procedure bylaw is not within the scope of the administration policies, and I'll remind council a little bit on what the policy mandate is for that. It's financial services, facility management, human resources and organizational development manners, communication and customer service, information systems and technology, bylaw enforcement and licensing, performance management and standards, corporate policies, Kingston Airport, and accessibility. This, this deferral...
Point of order, you didn't finish the list.
I'm sorry, what was the point of order?
The councillor did not finish the list, there is a few more.
That's, that's not a point of order. That's a point that can be argued at the debate table, but you can interject with a point of order on something that you dispute that somebody else has said. I'm just, I'm just, that's my ruling. Councilor Emes, you, you have the floor, you have 25 seconds on the clock.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just summarizing, I, I understand the need for wanting to revisit this, it's, I don't believe the administrative policies is the right landing spot for it, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, next is Councilor Son.
Thank you, worship. I will be quick. Respect to all those delegations, if we defer this motion to, let's say, if it's go to the committee, we will see only four or five people come forward. Like, tonight, we have only two delegations speaking, and I have three email, which is out of my district, not from the, my district even. So I don't know how we can call the public consultation. We have surveys, it's less than 1% people participate, and we have public engagement, it's less than half percent, you know, sometimes only 13, 14 people, and out of 10,000 population in the district, only 10 people will participate. I don't know how we can call the public consultation, so I will vote no, we will decide it tonight.
Councilor Rich.
Through you, worship. Councilor Emo said everything I was going to about this going to administrative policies not being the correct space, so I'll vote no for this amendment.
Okay, Councilor Shaez.
Thank you. Just to carry on, Councilor...
Thank you. Just to carry on, Counsel Amos was saying, may I ask a question of staff?
Yes.
Um, why wasn't this taken to admin policies in the first place?
Madam Kirk.
Uh, through you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, Counselor Shays, for the question. Staff for the opinion that this does not fall within the mandate of the Administrative Policies Committee. The, uh, council procedure bylaw directly governs council and, in our opinion, should be properly brought to council as a whole for deliberation.
Thank you. And I also want to sort of clarify because it was commented that council cannot bring this back to be, be seen, but apparently it can, just needs more than a majority, a three-quarter vote in order to do so, in order for it to pass. So it can be brought back. It was misrepresented earlier in conversation. Thank you.
Uh, anybody else on the deferral? Um, Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you. Um, through you, your worship, just one question to staff. If we don't defer it to admin policy committee, where would we defer it to?
Madam Kirk.
Uh, like I said before, in my opinion, it belongs here at council. It is a bylaw that governs this council and should rightly be deliberated, debated, amended in this room by this council.
Okay. So maybe tonight then. Got it.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hassan, would you take the chair?
I do and recognize you.
Um, I have a concern. My only concern is that if we deal with this at council, if we're going to pick it apart and do all sorts of amendments and discussion, we're going to be here for a long, long time. So I'm just going to throw that out there just as a potential word of warning that sometimes that is a good reason to defer something to committee if it's something where we really need to get into the details and discuss them. If we're basically fine with what's in front of us, then I would say, yes, let's deal with it at council and go ahead. But if people around the table have like numerous amendments that they want to bring forward, then I would just offer that as a caution about whether we really want to do that tonight. So, thank you. If I could have the chair back.
Yes, you do, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on the deferral? Counsel Glenn, you have the final word.
Thank you. Um, one quick question to staff. Did I confirm where this should go when I put this forward?
Um, yeah, Counselor, uh, Glenn, uh, yes, you did ask us. I mean, we suggested administrative policies only because it, council always has the ability to defer something on an ad hoc basis to a committee and it would best fit in the administrative policies committee were it to be deferred. When asked why we didn't bring it to administrative policies committee, that's where our response was because... Sorry. I guess I'm limited to one minute, too. My apologies. Uh, it's because we believe that it, it should be deliberated by all of council. So.
And has it been, have amendment, or sorry, have changes like this to procedure been brought to admin, uh, policy before?
Uh, it has been deferred to administrative policies in the past. It was not originally brought there.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think there are a lot of questions about this. So I'm hoping that you will reconsider and allow the time to, to have that conversation because I do think that we will be here for quite some time, uh, deliberating this. There were a lot of questions by constituents and just because there aren't very many people that engage sometimes, it actually should flag to you that this is one of the reasons they don't, because they don't feel heard. They feel that we're just going to make that decision. They don't get a say. So why should I bother showing up? Um, so I think that's one of the things to consider here is that this is an opportunity to allow that to happen and perhaps encourage more engagement from the public. So I hope you'll defer this so that the public gets that opportunity and we get a fuller discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So we will call the vote on the motion to defer. Okay. So the deferral loses by a vote of five to eight. Uh, Counsel Glenn, Counsel Osterhoff, Mayor Patterson, Counsel McLaren, and Counsel Ossanik in the minority. So we are back to the, um, item clause four. Um, Counselor Glenn, you still have the floor. Uh, in fact, you have four minutes and 50 seconds on the clock. Uh, so I will hand it over to you.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Yes. Uh, could we take a short recess so that we could prepare some of our amendments on this and some of the questions based on the delegations that came here? Um, I do have a few more as a result of that and, uh, this could take some time to prepare. Um, I wasn't planning on doing anything like this, but the, um, delegation did in fact raise some good questions and it's important to deal with them.
So your, your point of order is well taken. Uh, I was planning to, to take a recess. I was planning to kind of start and then normally trying to take a recess around nine o'clock. Um, however, if, if it's fair to kind of keep the level playing field so that everyone has a chance to do whatever they want to do before speaking, I think that's fair. Uh, it's 8:42. We'll take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:52. Check, check. Okay. All right. We're good to go. Okay, folks. Sorry. I was just a couple minutes late. So we'll get started again. If I can just get counsel to, uh, grab their seats, please. Okay. So just a quick review of where we're at. So we have, um, uh, Counsel Glenn has the floor, four minutes and 50 seconds remaining on the clock, and then we will continue through the debate from there. So I will have a speaker's list. Uh, so Counsel Glenn, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you. Um, this is actually probably going to be quite short because I've decided that I'm going to have to vote against this. Uh, one of the founding principles of the democratic process is full engagement and that sometimes means we have to stretch ourselves a little bit further. So simply saying that something's been posted, um, isn't good enough. We need to give that extra opportunity. I know that myself, I sometimes miss things. I don't see them because I'm busy. I have lots going on in my life. So the opportunity to come and express your opinion and make sure that you So the opportunity to come and express your opinion and make sure that you know what's coming forward is critically important. So that's why I brought the motion to defer. I think that we are going down a rabbit's hole at the moment with not giving comfort to our constituents that this is something that will work. We see lack of people coming out to vote. We see a lack of faith in this system, and that's on us to try and fix as elected officials. We've got a citizenry who's telling us, "We're not sure about this. We have questions," and they're not feeling that they've got those full answers. And it's not just the people who came and delegated tonight. There have been numerous people reach out to me who are quite concerned. Yes, I've had the opportunity to speak directly to clerks, to actually get some other information. That's the same kind of information that the public should be owed. An explanation for why things are changing, what that fundamentally is going to mean. We live and work in this environment on a daily basis, so we understand it a lot better. But the public doesn't. And so they look at it and go, "Wait, does that mean I'm not going to get this opportunity? Wait, does this mean I'm not going to get that chance?" We've seen it happen with so many other issues, where people have said, "This came up really quick. I was away, I didn't have a chance to get there." So it's not as simple as we think, and when we rush, this is exactly the sort of thing that happens. And so they're simply going to lose greater faith in us, because we didn't take that extra little bit of time to go back and let them have their say. Once we've done that, and we've made a decision, that's fine. And this isn't about not deciding. It's about deciding with all the input we can possibly get. And so I'm going to have to, I think, at this point, vote against this because of the haste piece, because we are not being considerate enough to involve people as fully as possible. We have a number of people who don't use the website, who aren't connected to us that way, and they've lost the ability to know what's going on. We're seeing reduced circulation of papers. Yes, I know, we're trying to get that changed over time, but there's a significant number of the population who don't get their information through Facebook, social media of any other kind. So they're left out of this conversation as well, and they deserve to be part of it. So this is just a little extra time, an opportunity that we could have given them that we're not giving them. So right now, I'm going to have to vote against this, because at least they know how things work at this point in time to some degree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Shaves.
Thank you. I have an amendment.
Okay. Do the clerks have your amendment? Could I just ask them to put it up on the screen? Okay, is... Okay, so this is moved by Counselor Shaves, so I'll ask for a seconder momentarily. Okay.
Counselor Tozo had to second it.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, so moved by Counselor Shaves, seconded by Counselor Tozo, that Exhibit A to the report be amended to add the following before subsection 12.42, with subsequent subsections renumbered accordingly. 1242, at a meeting, each member may make one, but no more than one, new motion. Okay? Counselor Shaves, you have the floor.
Quite simply, there've been times that there've been many motions put forward, and just thinking about staff and their time, much stress it puts on. That's basically the reasoning behind the motion and amendment, and that's all I got to say.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Senak.
Thank you, Your Worship. I never noticed that that was a problem, that a counselor had more than one motion on a council night, and this was causing a problem. You know, like, a lot of our meetings, and relatively early, like, I don't know, maybe I can ask the mover, like, what's really the premise behind that? Because right now, I'm not supporting that. I don't understand what the big deal is if a counselor has two motions on the agenda that night.
Counselor Shaves.
It all depends on the depth of those motions, and what effect they have, and limiting... There's 12 of us here, so if we each put 12 motions in, that's quite a bit. So if we put two, that's 24. So, I understand that everyone does, but that can put a strain on staff, and they're already stressed as it is with the workload and everything else they have on their docket, so.
Counselor Senak, you have the floor. If there's anything else you want to say.
Some nights, we have no motions. Sometimes, we have two, three. We've never had 12 motions in the 18 years I've been on council, so I can't support this, sorry.
Okay. Next on our list is Counselor Tozo.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I seconded the motion. I think some of the thinking behind it was, we have an incredibly ambitious strategic plan. I think probably one of the more ambitious strategic plans, as we've been told several times. When we, as counselors, put motions forward, in some ways, we're deviating from that plan. We're kind of saying, "Don't focus on that. The broader objectives that we need to do, the housing crisis, our strategic priorities, environmental stewardship, focus on that." I think the intent of this motion is to say, if you've got something that you need to turn the ship of state, pardon the term, make sure it's of value, and make sure that we're not over-encumbezing city staff on the issues related that we're bringing up. I think this is as much a respect for council, council time, and also respect for staff time. We only have a so finite amount of staff hours, that putting the staff in different directions as we go, I mean, we're... I think this motion is just saying, yeah, make sure your motions you're putting forward are meaningful and of worthwhile, that we're diverting direction and staff resources from our time. I was happy to second this. I think it is a good way to kind of say, we've committed to our strategic plan, let's stick to that plan, get, accomplish what we set out when we were elected. Thank you.
Counselor Oshaf.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I would agree with Counselor Osenek here. I don't think we should be limiting something and trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist, where it's a waste of time. I think that we're okay to... If it becomes a problem, then you deal with it, but there is no problem that we're trying to solve. Thank you.
Counselor Glenn.
I can't support this, because, again, this is, flies in the face of what we're here to do, which is sometimes provide direction. The occasions where we have had some multiple motions, a lot of them have been housekeeping matters. So for example, last summer, public health needed to dispose of a property, and to do that quickly, it was a housekeeping motion. It didn't involve anything from staff, other than, okay, we're going to be able to do this. So what it prevents, then, is the bringing of those motions, if you happen to have to bring a few things that are, again, what I would call, housekeeping matters. So, you know, to think that we would want to limit the ability of any one of us to do our jobs, because that's what we're talking about here. What if something comes up in your district, you've already got your name, you know, forward on another motion, and it's time-critical, time-sensitive? The Bolivar Garden one, for me, was a time-sensitive one, and if I'd had another motion coming forward, I couldn't have done that, and I couldn't have helped a constituent. So that's what you're going to do. You're going to handcuff yourselves as well from being able to do some of those really necessary things. So I just can't in good conscience do this, and again, limit the democratic process. If there's concerns about staff time, then let's have that discussion. Is that a resourcing issue? Is that having conversations with one another? But this is just, again, in my opinion, an anti-democratic process.
Counselor Boem.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So just thinking about this, I don't actually really see it as limiting in the grand scheme of things, because, for instance, if Counselor Tozo has a motion to bring forward, he needs to collaborate with somebody, because you need a seconder. Okay? So rather than have Counselor Tozo now bring forward four motions at a meeting, which you can bring forward all the motions you want, which all take people's times and staff resources, and also can delay the efficiency of our meetings to the point where a lot of people have commented to me, "I just tune out, because I don't even know what you're talking about, and it seems like you're talking about a whole bunch of things, and you never move on from that, and there's just this rotation around and around and around that never seems to go anywhere." So I don't even bother watching that. How do you guys do it? I don't know what's going on. I get a lot of that feedback from people trying to follow councils. So if Counselor Tozo brings a motion, and then something happens in his district, he's going to have to get somebody else to possibly move that motion, or he's going to have to collaborate with somebody. If you can't do that, your motion's dead before it begins. So why are we talking and debating it if it's going to fail 12-1? So it's one of these things where this is actually going to foster greater collaboration behind the scenes, to allow people to actually bring forward fruitful motions that have a chance of passing, that have already kind of been bounced around multiple counselors, to get a better product forward to councils, so we don't have to spend endless hours of debate here on something for something to fail. So this could actually, in turn, increase the efficiency of our meetings and increase collaboration amongst counselors. I would be happy if Counselor Tozo came to me and said, "Hey, something came up in my district, I already moved a motion. Okay, put my name on that instead, you move the one from your district." I'd love to work with somebody like that. And then I would become more knowledgeable about what's going on in other districts as well, which would in turn make me a better city counselor, because I wouldn't be focused just on my own district. I'd be looking at the city more holistically as a whole. I don't actually really see an issue with this. This allows 13 motions at every meeting, and according to Counselor Osenek, I don't believe we've ever had that many, so I don't really see how this is limiting in the grand scheme of things. I see it as a way to foster collaboration amongst us, to vet our motions and our initiatives with each other, and to basically get a better product to council, which we then have to spend less time amending, which can create more efficiency, which at the end of the day, is not a bad thing, especially when people at home are watching this. We look like we have it together more, rather than sitting here bouncing ideas off each other in front of everybody. We can do that behind the scenes a bit more. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Next on my list is Counselor Rich.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship, and through... Yeah, Counselor Boem said it. That's the whole reason that I'm in support of this, is because it increases collaboration between counselors and fosters a greater sense of working together. If, for example, a counselor wants to put forward three motions, and they have to find other counselors to work with, in that case, the cooperation piece is really important, as well as having conversations with counselors that maybe you don't often have conversations with, because it forces you to move out of sight of the general, your fellow colleagues, and reach out to other counselors. So I think in this case, it's going to bring, it's going to be more efficient and bring stronger products in terms of motions to council, which is why I'm supporting it.
Anybody else on the amendment? Counselor McLaren.
A long time ago, I lived in South Korea, and I had the chance to see how democratic South Korea was able to work, and we always got news also from the North, North Korea. And there was a very big difference. Among the differences that I could see was the ability of lawmakers to do things for their constituents. In the North, it was very limited. It was all top-down, "Come and tell people how to do things." In the South, there was a lot more debate, there was a lot more inefficiencies, because democracy is not a business in which you want to increase efficiency. That's the wrong model. When you increase efficiency, you increase authoritarianism, and that is what I see this is happening. We have a problem in Kingston. A lot of people may have noticed that there's a lot more violence, including political violence, and I submit to you that this is probably because there are a lot of people who have a lot of pent-up anger, and they're getting less of a chance to vent. But also, in this particular case, there are maybe some counselors who have busier districts than others. I know, I'm very lucky, I have a very calm district. I know that Sidnum District Counselor works a lot harder than I do, and has a lot more emails that come in. I happen to be just a lucky counselor in that respect. Not all of us are... Well, we don't know exactly where we are all on that scale, but I imagine that some of us have to work a little harder with our constituents, and they demand a little bit more, depending on which district you're in. So we should be making allowances for differences within the regions. And if a counselor is limited to only one or two meetings, two, with, like, you know, somebody who's adjacent to them, who has a similar issue, we are becoming more authoritarian here, and this is part of the decline of the trust in democracy that I see. It's just a small little cut that we're making now, that increases the pressure, and it just builds up over time. It's not appropriate to be limiting us in this respect. I see this as a move in the closer, in the direction of what North Korea practices in their democratic People's Republic. And they call themselves a democracy, and a lot of people do that, and you know that there's an index of which countries have greater or less democracies. You can see on that index that access to your politicians and your politicians' ability to bring things to the floor is a measure of the strength of a democracy in a particular area. This is an erosion of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I do, I recommend you.
So, I wasn't 100% sure how I was going to vote on this amendment. I'm still not 100% sure. I think there are good arguments on both sides, but I just, I need to say this. This is not about making us into North Korea. I'm sorry. This is not anti-democratic. Council has the right to decide collectively the rules by which we are governed. We are all democratically elected. I don't think anyone's suggesting that we're going to change that. We're just talking about what are the rules that are going to help us to govern effectively. And to say that efficiency is authoritarian, again, I can't disagree with that more. You can have democracy that is efficient, you can have efficient decision-making, that doesn't mean that democracy means that we have to go on endlessly and talk about things and not make decisions, because sometimes some people interpret that as democracy. So I just think we need to just lower the temperature a little bit here. Let's not suggest that this is more than what it is. This is a procedural rule that we have to decide whether or not we want to bind ourselves by. I think that there are arguments in favor. I think Counselor Boem gave some good arguments to say that you can share those motions, right? At the same time, I think it's worth reflecting, are there cases or situations where I myself, as a particular member of council, might want to be able to actually move more than one motion? That's fair, and we can disagree on this point, but can we please cool the rhetoric here? This is not about the end of democracy. This is just simply a matter of whether or not we want to add an additional rule to our council procedural bylaw. Thank you.
Turn the chair to you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Okay, Counselor Shaves, you have the last word.
Thank you, and I'll stand there, because I can't follow Counselor Boem.
Okay. So we will call the vote Okay, that carries by a vote of eight to five. Counselor Shaves, you still have four minutes and 55 seconds on the clock. If there's anything else you want to say.
No, I don't.
Next on my list is Counselor Chaney.
I have an amendment also.
Moved by Counselor Chaney, seconded by Counselor Tozo, that we amend the procedural bylaw by deleting subsection 610(c), by adding the following clause E, "An information report to council, and subsequent clauses are renumbered accordingly." Okay, so just to be clear, this amendment is to delete the prohibition on delegation speaking to information reports. Is that fair? I just want to make sure everyone understands the implications of that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Counselor Chaney, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll just be quick. So it's just to allow people to come and speak to information reports. I don't see it as a problem to... I don't think we should restrict that. It's not something that happens often, people coming to talk about these, but sometimes there's some important information that might want to be shared. there's some important information that might wanna be shared with us, and I just think it's important, so I hope you all consider it.
Anybody else on the amendment? Okay, we're ready to call the vote? All right. Sorry, guys, I'm thinking. All right, that vote carries by a vote of 13 to zero. Councillor Shinani, you still have the floor, four minutes and 55 seconds, if there's anything else that you want to say or add.
I'm not sure. I think that, overall, like, I understand the reasoning behind this, and I really like the addition of six delegations and the ability that, by default, or we can always add more anyway, so I think it's a good idea, so.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the council procedural bylaw updates as amended? Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I can't support the changes, although I like that last amendment that we made, but overall, I can't. I think it's our job to listen to everybody, you know, and to see all points of view. I know that sometimes it makes for a long council meeting or committee meeting, but that's our job. It's our job. It's not like we have meetings every single night where there are delegations at all the meetings that we do go to. It's our job. And we used to have standing committees once a month, back in my first term at council, once a month. And we did have lots of meetings that went to midnight, or even one, or 1:30 in the morning over the last 18 years, but it's our job. That's why we're here. And I rely on the public input. There's people in our community that are experts. We heard that earlier tonight, you know, other councillors have said it. I rely on their input, because two heads are better than one. And I rely on the input. I just can't emphasize that enough. And I think it's awful that we're limiting number of delegations going forward from here on in. Like, I just think that's awful. We already, you know, have, I've felt the loss of our local news channel, and now we're limiting public input. I just think that's just, it's just awful. And we're getting paid more as councillors over the last 18 years than before. So, like, we're saying we wanna be home by nine o'clock every night because we only wanna listen to six people per meeting? Like, I just don't think that's fair. I don't, I don't agree with this at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Strong?
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. I kind of have clarity, 'cause I'm getting a little confused on some of this. On other updates on the report, it says the entrance of the mayor and roll-call sections have been removed. Can I have clarity on that? What's that mean?
Madam Clerk?
We've removed those because they're procedural, they don't need to be part of a bylaw. We don't need a bylaw to tell us how the mayor will or won't enter the council chamber. So we've just removed a procedural element. You know, we may have a future mayor at some point who does not want to enter the chamber in the same fashion, and right now, it's codified in the bylaw that the mayor must. So, I'm just giving flexibility.
But it's being removed, so...
Yes, it's a procedural aspect that's being removed. We're not necessarily going to change that. It's giving an option to the mayor of the day to choose whether they would like to continue the tradition of ringing of the bell, and the clerk leads the mayor into the room. If they do not want to do that, they don't have to. But right now, because it is codified in the bylaw, it's required.
And what about the roll-call? Why would we not, why wouldn't that decorum and...
Because the way our procedural bylaw is written, councillor, it says that we will not start until there is quorum. So we're doing roll-call as we, by calling the meeting to order, we confirm the quorum, that is the roll-call. It's not being, it's not being removed, we do it as part of our call to order.
But it could be removed, because it's no longer bylaw.
Yes. The words "roll-call" are being removed from the bylaw. It's not that we don't do roll-call, we do that as part of when the mayor calls to order and I confirm that there is a quorum. So the process is still taking place.
I just wonder why it has to be removed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it should be, but I think decorum is important, I think order is important, and it should be written, so.
Councillor, quorum is required.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I'm saying I wish it would remain, but go for it.
The role will still be taken, and it will be recorded in the minutes.
But it's removed. It's being removed from the order now.
Everything that took place tonight will continue to take place.
Right, but I don't...
It's just right now, it says "roll-call." We don't actually go around the chamber and call out the names and ask people to raise their hand and say "present," right? It's done as a matter of process, and when we confirm quorum, we confirm who, we know that we have seven members present, at least seven members present, and we know who is absent. And we do that throughout the meeting.
So I don't often do this, but I'm actually gonna intervene and just remind both the clerk and the member that everything is through the chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, I just would like to ask my colleagues, I think that we should leave it there, but I just think the removal is risky and could create confusion and lose our decorum, and I think it's something that is at risk here, so if you, but I'll leave it with you. I'm not gonna make a motion on this one. If you don't hear what I hear, then I'm the only one.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Tozo?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I got, I get really heated about democracy and undemocracy 'cause of my background. This was a very vigorous debate, and I really appreciate the comments from the delegations and everybody else. I wanna just echo, I don't think this is undemocratic, this is about council procedure, it's about creating efficiencies and making sure that we can balance what is generally listening to the community with making sure that we conduct appropriate council business. I wanna address some of the comments that were made. There are many ways to access us. Just today, I got 26 emails from constituents, 26 that accessed me today. I, we get numerous phone calls. We're very available. Times have changed, people do access us from a public forum in a way that that's not just delegations to council. We're expanding the number of delegations council has a right. We don't need to pass it, it's six. And as councillor Bone said, if you wanna pass an additional delegation, talk to somebody and say, like councillor Rich and I did tonight, "Hey, Greg, would you mind passing, adding another delegation?" Two-minute conversation, we add more delegates. There's a real sage piece of advice I got from Jim Neil. Jim Neil said, "Stay in your lane." That I thought was really kind of interesting as far as insights. We conduct very important business at the municipal level. It's not always sexy, it's not always important. We do talk a lot about sewage, but it is valuable. And I think when we're diverted to talk about international issues, which sometimes I'm really fascinated with, we take energy away from really helping our constituents, and our constituents desperately need assistance. There are multiple crises that are occurring. Procedural bylaws, to reference what councillor Stephen said, they're not like a piece of art forever stuck in time. They're more like a piece of art, open to interpretation and change. We can come back, we can revisit it, we can see what works and what doesn't work. Generally speaking, I support these bylaw changes. I think that they will help us be more productive in really dealing with the crises that our city is facing. I think they're measured, I think they're calm, and if they don't work, we can revisit them in a year's time. And if, honestly, if they don't work and we need a supermajority, I'll vote to revisit it. Why not? If how we're governing ourselves does not meet the needs of this council and this community, and we hear, and our email inbox fills up tomorrow, and the community says, "We don't like this, we don't like how you're being governed, let's revisit it." I'd be happy to support a motion if we get that actual blowback from the community. Let's pass this, let's get down to the business of serving the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sun?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I heard my colleagues loud and clear from the both side. It's my point of view to, it's not limiting, it's delivering the quality work. It's not that we're becoming undemocratic, but we are, let's, for example, if I add four delegations for one issue, four speaking for the same issue after one or second delegation, the other two are actually losing the value of what they're saying, because they're gonna speak about the same thing. For the same issue, I will have 50 emails, which I can read, not only from my constituents, but all over the city, all the activists, all the influence groups, and everybody else. If I want to give a value to that when I vote, I can read those emails and can value it. We do not need to have 10 people speaking for the same issue, for the same line, like we get 100 emails today with the same format, same word. I open one or two, and then rest, I was just deleting it, because it's the same, as soon as I open, it's the same taglines, the same thing saying again and again. So it's not that I am undemocratic, because I don't wanna read them, I give the value, but it's the same message in there. So we are talking about on this whole issue, on this, in this house, that work quality-wise. Sitting here until midnight is not a problem. I have no life, just only the council. So I can sit here all night, I don't mind that, but I'm going to be effective, I'm going to be deliver after midnight what I'm supposed to deliver. So it's quality, it's not the quantity. So I think we should consider to bring those procedural bylaw time to time, revisit it, make it efficient and more productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I do, I recognize you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna start with a question. Madam Clerk, could you describe, was there input from council before these recommendations came forward? Was there an effort from staff to survey members of council around the table about what they felt was working and what wasn't working at council meetings that led up to this report?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, for the question. Yes, we had received, we had received some unsolicited, I guess is not quite the right word, involuntary or unrequested feedback, and we receive that all the time from members of council and from members of the public about things that they would like to see or what they think is working or not working. That was part of the impetus to initiate the review at this time, and as part of that review, we did prepare an anonymous survey that was sent out to members of council. We received responses from almost all members of council, and we use that feedback to formulate the recommendations that are in front of you tonight.
Thank you. So I think it's important to clarify that we have gotten tonight what we asked for, right? I'd like to, I'd like to comment on three of the major changes. The first is respect to standing committees. One of the problems that we have had in the past is that something is debated at length at committee, and there's many people that can come and speak at committee, and then it comes to council. It's debated at length, and everyone comes to council. And what that does is it then dissuades people from like, well, why bother engaging in the committee when everyone's gonna come and speak to council anyways, and that's where the decision's gonna be made? So, the idea of changing where the delegations line up is to actually make the standing committees more effective, actually make them more engaging, right? So that people will know, that is your chance at the committee, whereas we heard the delegations, it's a great laboratory where everyone can come and speak and have input, and then that recommendation comes to council. So I actually think, I actually see these procedural changes actually empowering standing committees, 'cause I agree, I actually think that they are, some of them are a little underutilized, I think this would actually empower them. That's my first point. Second, I wanna talk about the limit on delegations. There are some things that are unsaid, but around the table, we all know this is true. There are some, the only time that a limit on delegations really comes into play is when a super controversial issue comes to council, and it's an arms race. How many, which side can get the most number of delegations to speak, as though somehow that's the scorecard by which council's gonna make a decision? That's what this is meant to address. It's not efficient, it doesn't, it's not helpful, right? When a controversial issue's coming to council, we've already heard all of the arguments, we've heard from hundreds of people, and we already know, generally, I'm sure when we walk to the room, what we think are the best arguments, maybe what way we're leaning, of course, we wanna hear from people. But to go through the exercise of the arms race of just how many people can line up to tell council to vote yes, and how many can line up to tell council to vote no, come on. It's really about having people speak, but also being real, that most of the input, most of the public input that we get is not at this podium. Most of the input that we get is through telephone, through email, through social media, talking to people on the street, right? There are so many ways that they can get to us. We are the most accessible level of government, right? If we were like upper levels of government, it was impossible to get to you, sure, okay, then we have to find a forum for people to get to us, but they all get to us all the time. So I think that that's an important piece to keep in mind. I have a third point. But I forget what it is. I wrote it down. Oh, yeah.
You are limited to two only, sir.
What's that? Okay. I just, I wanna speak for a moment about international issues. I have a question. Madam Clerk, would passing these changes to our bylaw prevent us from passing a motion of condolence? Or does this affect our ability on motions of recognition, motions of crank congratulations, motions of condolence?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Patterson. No, it would not make any effect, make any change to those types of motions, those would still be permitted.
Okay. So I wanna make a point here. We can still do all those important things where it's very clear if there's something that is not controversial, right? Where we can support, we can offer condolence, we can offer congratulations, all those things. Let's be clear what this is. We know that sometimes there are international issues that are divisive, they come up, and there's an attempt to try to get city council to take a side. And quite frankly, that is back to councillor Tozo's point. That's about staying in our lane. We have enough really important issues to deal with at a municipal level, we do not need to spend time around this table debating geopolitical issues that are way outside of our jurisdiction. Now, what I do like to see is that there is still the provision for us to wade into national and provincial issues, to pressure levels of government to take stands, that is an important role for us. But we have to set a limit there. And so I think when you, when we talk about this, again, this is not anti-democratic, this is talking about how do we make council as a whole work more effective? How do we make it more efficient? And again, this is the feedback that staff asked for, we gave it, and this is what's in front of us. So I personally am happy to support this, I think councillor Tozo makes a good point. If there's anything that isn't working, we can always revisit it later, and I'd be happy to do so as well. So I'm fine to support the amendments, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
I return the chair to you. And may I have a question too for the...
So you've already spoken.
Question?
You've already spoken, so that is in our procedural bylaw. You can only speak once. Okay, next on my list is councillor Bone.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Just to kinda highlight some sort of high-level arguments here, councillor Tozo mentioned advancing our strategic plan. We gave staff a massive undertaking, and we are pretty close to halfway through this term. So, we need to take a deep breath and look at what we've accomplished and what yet remains to be accomplished. So, I need to take a note of what was said earlier, that efficiency and being effective somehow lowers the quality of democracy. I would actually counter that it raises it, because the more that people see you getting done in an effective and efficient manner, the more likely they are to bring their problems to you and engage, and actually follow and watch council. When you get comments day after day, how do you sit there? What are you guys even doing? How'd you talk about a fence for two hours? Do you even do anything? That is disheartening and discouraging, and what it does is it's a disservice to all the amazing things that we actually produce in these chambers when we collaborate and work together. So, in my mind, when the public engages and sees, "Wow, they've really got it together," it's almost like they had a plan before they came in the room, they worked... it's almost like they had a plan before they came in the room, they worked it out, they collaborated, the motions on the floor didn't need to be amended 10 times, they must be doing work outside of that chamber. Which brings me to my next point. If your public consultation is only happening in this chamber when delegations come in, please do better. Listen to people on the street, go to meetings, be accessible on Facebook. I can probably tell you personally, I get tagged about 20 times a day. Sometimes it's because the curb on a sidewalk is too high in a certain area, other times it's because the LaSalle Causeway apparently hasn't been working for months. I mean, yeah, so, I mean, there's all these things, but be accessible. You should not be waiting until an issue is in these chambers and there's a few delegations that appear. It's great to hear from them, it's definitely part of democracy, but you should have a lot of that information before you come in this room. Respecting people's time is not just our time and staff's time, that includes the public's time. So when people have to come in here, and sometimes we've done it where we've moved an issue forward, trying to respect the hundreds of people that have attended and/or are watching at home because there's a sensitive issue, we already do this. We're trying to respect everybody's time, that's not a negative thing. So as Counselor Tozzo said, if some of this just plainly isn't working, we can fix it. But there's two different approaches sort of at play here, and one is analysis paralysis, where we do nothing because we're scared to do anything, and the other one is incremental policy changes, where we go, wow, we got to do something, but the safe play is to only change a little bit each time, so we're really not changing anything at all. So in this case, we've made some changes, which probably might seem a bit extreme, but in play are more affecting a procedural bylaw. It's probably more than we're used to changing, which is why there's a little bit of fear around it, but again, like every council that will come after us and every council that came before, we have the right to amend things if we don't get it right the first time. Counselor Tozzo, you said something earlier tonight, which quite frankly was, you know, we've got to stop deferring everything. At some point, you got to stop the studies, you got to just make a decision. And maybe you're wrong, or maybe you get it 90% right, and you can go back and fix the other 10% later, but I agree with that, is people want to, they need to see some type of decisive leadership. Doesn't mean we'll always be right, but they want to see decision-making, not, we need another study, we need another study, oh, end of the term, new term, like it's like, like at some point, you're right, we were elected to make decisions. So I'll be supporting this with that in mind. If we got something wrong, I'll see y'all back here in a year and we'll fix it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has not already spoken? Okay, if not, we will call then the vote on clause four as amended. Okay, and that carries by vote 11 to 2. Counselor Glenn and Counselor Ossanek opposed. Okay, thank you. So that takes us to the end of report number 80. Now we'll move to report number 81 from the CAO.
Sorry. Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Ossanek, that report 81 from the chief administrative officer, excuse me, chief administrative officer, consider, be received and considered.
Okay, so there is just the one clause, Limestone City Cooperative Housing Inc., project proposal update. It is a consider report, so I'm looking for a counsel to move one of the two options. Counselor McLaren?
I'd like to move option one, please.
Okay, is there a second round? Seconded by Counselor Ossanek. Okay, option number one is on the floor. Counselor McLaren, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you. So this has been a long time coming, we're about 16 months since this all started, and there are still a lot of crises in the world today, and this has been developed to try and address as many of those as we can, seven in particular. So you may be aware that there's a housing crisis, a housing supply crisis. This is trying to deal with that by adding another 248 units. You may have heard that there's a housing affordability crisis. This is a nonprofit co-op. Just to be clear, nonprofit does mean that it is below market rent, okay? And co-op means that it's even lower than nonprofit, because you have volunteer labor that reduces the costs of operating. So it's dealing with those two crises. There's another set of crises in Ontario and in the world, and that's got to do with food security. You may have heard that some people go hungry, even in Kingston. Better? This project is meant to deal with that one as well. We're trying to get a vertical farm, an industrial-sized vertical farm, that will be supported by co-op labor. This is what makes the vertical farm viable. Labor costs have always been the thing that has limited vertical farms. We found a way to do that. And the size of it, it will feed everybody in the co-op, and three times more. This means that we will have food for local pantries, for food banks, and available to the local community as well. You may have heard that there's a quality food crisis. If you happen to be of lower income, sometimes the worst kind of food is the one that preserves the longest, resulting in unhealthy eating habits. We're providing nutritious food for everybody, in other words, dealing with and access to more people in Kingston having nutritious food. Some may have also heard that there is a climate crisis. This building is designed to be zero energy and zero carbon. We hope not to be actually taking any energy from the grid. We found a company in Toronto, Matrix, that builds solar panels that can look like wood, like stone, like transparent glass. This whole building will be covered in solar panels, next-generation solar panels. In addition to that, we're going to have a full geothermal groundwater, ground heating system that will keep the building at a particularly constant temperature, winter or summer. Adding these two together, we may even have a surplus of energy. So we're providing a ride-share program where surplus energy will be stored, and it's going to be bidirectional. So you store it during the day, and you use it to run the place at night. Zero energy use from the grid. This is sort of where the future is if we want to avoid the last crisis, the seventh one. You may have also heard that there is an energy crisis coming to North America, an energy production crisis. We're all going to be hit. Apparently Kingston might be hit a little earlier than the rest with rolling blackouts. We've heard about this through Utilities Kingston, right? This building won't be affected, but it's supposed to lead the way in showing how things can be done. We're dealing with seven different crises in one building, and so, and the best way, the best thing about this is that we're doing this without long-term city financing. We're asking for a bridge line of credit. So just one thing to be clear, the report is actually a little bit off. Our report, the request that I made to the city, which is included in your package, is asking for a little different, something a little different than what was asked in the report, so I'll be making an amendment later for that. But the point that I'm trying to suggest to you is that we are in several crises right now, and we need new and novel solutions to do this, to deal with them. I'm proposing one project that deals with seven crises that we're facing here in Kingston.
30 seconds.
And I'm hoping that you guys will consider investing, in a sense, in this. So in my last 30 seconds, I'd like to move an amendment, which the clerks can put up, please.
Okay, I'll pause your time there, Counselor McLaren, and then you'll have another five minutes once the amendment hits the floor. So moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Glenn, that option one of clause one, report 81. Point of order? Is there a point of order?
I thought it's one minute for an amendment. Not, you said, wait, did I? Oh, are you deferring or are you amending?
Did I say deferral? I'm sorry, I meant amendment. Did I say amendment?
I thought Spears had one minute for an amendment, not five.
No, no, it's five minutes. If it's a motion to amend, it's five minutes.
Oh, so all of us get five minutes for a motion to amend?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So this is an amendment to delete the words loan grant and replace with the words line of credit for three years, and reads as follows. The council approve up to $2,290,000 as a forgivable line of credit for three years to be paid out on a third-party invoice from the Working Fund Reserve, and then the rest of the clauses is the same. Okay, so just on the amendment, Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So here's the plan for how this is supposed to work out. In order to get the really big dollars, in order to get access to all the funding that's possible, we need to get to Class B estimates. To get to Class B estimates is going to take about two years, maybe two and a half years, depending on how fast we can get this going. And the itemized list there on paragraph 13 of the ask explains that. This is a line of credit, a forgivable line of credit in the event that it all stops. We don't plan to use it all at once, and we're trying not to use any of it, or as little of it as possible. The idea is that we start this going, as was mentioned in the delegation, we get this going, we start to build the momentum, we ratchet it up, and then we start to use private funds that are coming in to pay for the expenses that are needed going forward. We are also applying for other grants, seed funding from CMHC and FCM's Green Municipal Fund, and other ones that we're identifying also. These funds will be used to not have to borrow from the city as they come in. That's the important thing, as they come in. It's going to take time for them to come in. The first year will be the one that it's going to be used the most. Now, how do we pay this back? In the first year, the very next step that we need to do is upzone the land. You may have recalled that it was designed to be a fire station. We need to make it acceptable for a co-op. When you upzone something, the land value goes up. That's the initial equity. When a new building gets put in there, if we've upzoned it and you guys change your mind and say, no, don't build on this, the land value has gone up, the new building owner has, or the new owner has a certain amount of surety that he can get what we've already asked for. They may still require more zoning bylaw amendments, but the land value will still have gone up. This is an equity in the first year that we can build for the city if you choose not to have it, or if it fails. But the point that we're trying to do is that with this, with the philanthropic services, as they were describing it, they have contacts with a wide number of people of private sector money that can be brought in here, but it needs to be invested in by the city. So this is the ask. It is not all at once, it's to build equity in the first year through the land use and to acquire private capital that comes into this. This is a nonprofit co-op that we're talking about here. Nonprofit co-ops, anything that's nonprofit doesn't start with equity. That's what private enterprise is for. It's not going to be done without a government backing, and that's what this is an ask for. For example, CMHC seed funding, they will give us the seed funding, but if there's nobody to guarantee it, they won't. Nobody wants to be the first. So what I'm asking from the city is that commitment to be the first, to start the process, because without it, it's not going to go anywhere. This is in fact a do-or-die moment for this co-op. If you guys say no, you're killing off an affordable housing complex, 300 and 248 units. You're killing off a possible solution to a whole set of different crises that could be looked at, that we could be innovative in. And so for this amendment, I just want to make it clear that we plan to use as little as possible. This is to get the momentum going in the short term, because there is a housing crisis, and if we wait another six months or another year, that puts off the completion date and the occupancy date. I'm moving this as fast as possible because we are in a housing crisis, but we're also in a climate crisis, and in a food security crisis, and a food sovereignty crisis, and in a crisis of loneliness and isolation. This is what a co-op is supposed to do, is to overcome that loneliness and isolation with cooperative action within that. So for the amendment, I'll just leave it at that, and then I'll answer any questions that you guys might have in this.
Okay, so first we have, so we're just dealing with the amendment, just to be clear. So this is just the change of wording from forgivable loan grant to the line in bold that we see in the amendment. To the amendment, Counselor Glenn.
I'll be quick, please just support the amendment. It's a piece of clarity, and I think it better describes what Counselor McLaren's intent is in coming as a representative for the co-op, and what they intend to do with the potential funding. Thank you.
Anybody else on the amendment only? Counselor Schiff?
I'm confused, I'm sorry. I don't see much difference between the original and the amendment, because the key word I see here is forgivable, so to me, it doesn't matter if it's three years or from a third-party invoice, we're not getting that money back. It seems to be a big investment by the city and our taxpayers.
Is that a question, or is that a statement?
Well, it was a statement, but if someone wants to answer that, they can.
Counselor McLaren?
In the first version, 2.29 million would be transferred to us immediately. So I'm not asking for 2.29 million today or tomorrow. If you were to pass this, we don't need that today. What we would need is enough to pay the first invoice to the architect. The architect's going to be working for the next three years, the first invoice of the philanthropic services. The other two reports, they'll be done probably in the new year. Those two invoices would be the first payments. In six months, you have the opportunity to cancel this if you don't like where it's going. Just give me a chance.
Thank you, CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify that from a city staff perspective, when we get direction from council to allocate funding to various housing projects, we never provide full funding upfront. We establish agreements, we put in place agreements, and there are milestones that are required to be met in order to achieve or gain access to portions of the funding, but we never write a full check ahead of time to any organization. So I just want to clarify that in case there are questions about how staff conduct business.
Counselor Schiff? Counselor Son?
I have a question to the staff. The land for this project, is the city providing that land with a certain amount of money, or?
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, Deputy Mayor Hassan, the property is a city-owned property, and it's one that's been identified and committed for up to one year, as per the previous council approval. The value on this property, we haven't had an appraisal done in quite some time, but at this point, I would estimate the value probably to be between 1.2 to 1.5 million.
Thank you. Can I continue the comments?
You can, but remember, we're just speaking to the amendment at this point. Okay. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I do, I recognize you.
Thank you. So I guess just a question to staff. On the amendment only, do staff have any input or reaction to moving from forgivable loan grant to line of credit for three years to be paid on a third-party invoice? Is there any input from staff that would, that council should know about that would suggest whether or not these things are basically the same, or is there any functional difference between? Yes, Deputy Mayor, I think CEO Hurdle would like to respond.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So in terms of the change in the language, from a staff perspective, it doesn't make a difference. We would implement an agreement, and again, there would be milestones regardless if it was a forgivable loan. The way that staff would see this is either way, the intent would be to pay it back, and the question of where the payments would come from is still one that's outstanding as per the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, I think based on that response, I'm fine to support the amendment, and then obviously, we'll see where the rest of the discussions go. obviously, we'll see where the rest of the discussion goes. Thank you.
I return the chair to you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? Councilor Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Just so I'm perfectly clear, and maybe this was sort of answered, but if the, if it's a line of credit for three years, we don't really know who's paying that yet. But if the entity ceases to exist, we don't get the money back. Is that correct?
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Councilor Bohm, it would be the same for a forgivable loan. If we worked with an entity that ceased to exist and we had provided funding during that period of time, the city would not be able to recuperate because this particular organization does not have any equity, unlike a number of different organizations that we, we would work with typically.
So essentially, with other organizations, there could be some collateral or something posted which would allow us to sort of recoup some of those costs, whereas if I understand correctly, in this case, we're on, we're basically putting out all the funds, but there's really nothing to get back if, if that entity's not there anymore.
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. The risk is, is there, and it's a high risk, which is why staff did identify that in the report in terms of not being able to recuperate the funding and why staff also indicated that it is likely there would be, there would have to be a grant portion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, on the amendment only, Councilor Osterhoff?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I think I get it, but I guess I just wonder, because I, obviously, I trust the city, but is this, has this been reviewed by legal? And where would the money actually? I guess that's not the right question for now, is it?
Yeah, so again, so we'll have, yeah, more fulsome discussion once we get to the option as amended.
So from a legal perspective, Mayor Patterson, is that terminology, are we allowed to be in the, in the business of funding lines of credit? Is that true?
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, and our treasurer CFO is also on the line, may want to jump in. So as I indicated, there wouldn't be much of a difference between a line of credit or a forgivable loan, which we have established with other affordable housing organizations. Or for example, that's something that we had put in place at some point in time with Homebase Housing for their project at 484 Albert. And you will recall, of course, that we were looking at a number of different options for that project, but I'll let the CFO jump in if I've missed anything.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So no, that, that's correct, and just maybe to add, it really becomes more of a cash flow consideration. So as CEO Hurdle said, if it's a grant or even a specified amount of loan, we do have agreements whereby we say how much we'd be paying out whenever. A line of credit has a little bit more flexibility, so there's a maximum amount of the 2.2 million, but there's more of a flexibility around the cash flow and when we would send that out. Otherwise, they're very similar.
Okay, anybody else on the amendment? Councilman McLaren, any final comments on the amendment? Okay, so we will call the, sorry, just one second. So we'll call the vote. That carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Councilor Amos Bohm and Deputy Mayor Hassan dissenting. Okay, so now we are back to the main motion, main option as amended. Is there any discussion? Councilor Senek?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I have a question, I guess, to the mover. So we have like the grant application process, and it's usually, you know, pretty, it will be, and it always is, very competitive. So what do you think your chances are that you'll get the grant? What are you doing to maximize, you know, the potential to get the grant?
Thank you. So as you saw, Richard Gibson, he is our, our expert on that. He's been in the business for 30 years on both sides of the grant writing application process. He's also, well, we're also partly connected with the philanthropic services that are specialized in that particular aspect of being able to write more grants as well as applying for private funds. So together, these two entities, PHP and BDLS International Limited, are the apex grant writing team. So in this environment that we have, people applying for particular grants in which we are in competition, first of all, our project is second to none in innovation and possibly audacity. By the way, is a qualification for GMHC, or sorry, FCM loans. They have a quality called audacity, and they give you more points the more audacious it is. So that, plus all the fact that we're hitting all the major areas that are crises in this day and age, makes us at a higher probability of getting each and every one of those loans. But in addition to that, we are seeking loans from research branches of government. So among the ones that we're looking at, the Natural Sciences and Engineering Research Council of Canada has a whole bunch, because one of, some of the science that we're doing here is, is never been done before. We're developing a system in which we're taking the carbon dioxide that is human-produced in the living space and running it as enriched carbon dioxide through the plants to get a better yield on the crops. In fact, there are studies that this can be done with forests, and it helps with photosynthesis. Here's something that helped with our, with planning this. This particular report talks about the constraints on historic growth in global photosynthesis due to rising CO2 levels, and their conclusion is that between 1981 and 2000, plants around the world have increased their photosynthesis by 13.5%, plus or minus three and a half as a result of excess carbon in the air. So we do that in this. Can we measure how much the fruit, the legumes, the nuts, the root vegetables grow as a result of this? This is a basic science thing that will justify, well, our hypothesis is that based on what we've seen in other reports, it will also be effective for the food growing aspect, the human food growing aspect. So these kind of questions, these are scientific questions that we'll be doing basic science here and building the apparatus for it in one building that we can apply to the Natural Science and Engineering Research Council of Canada and also the Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada Organization. These are in addition to the grants that we get or that we're going to be applying for, for housing. So we are expanding the range of grants, grant possibilities and the depth of them through the audacity of the, of the ASK, of, sorry, of the project, but also of the side benefits, the science of it. So, and we've got the best grant writing team. These guys have got experts on it forever. So in that sense, we are the apex grant writing application team.
Excellent. Oops, sorry. Through you, Your Worship, another question. So one thing I really like about this project is not only is co-op very affordable, and we're in an affordability crisis right now, but this also has 74 affordable housing units in it. So have you received any objections that those 74 units is too concentrated, like at Planning Committee? We don't have any developments coming forward with affordable housing units in them at all. I'm really excited about these 74 affordable housing units in this co-op complex, but are, is there, has there been any feedback that it's too concentrated in one area?
Part of the reason that this is coming as a consider report is because the, our strategic plan has suggested that we should be spreading out affordable housing throughout the entire city. However, when it's across purposes to other parts of the strategic plan, such as affordable housing and getting more buildings built, we have to make a decision here, and this is part of what this is all about, is do we want affordable housing? Do we want to make it everywhere? If we're going to limit it only to the places where there are none, this project's going to fail. This is the space that it's been designed for and that we have approved. Back in February, if you recall, this land was set aside for a nonprofit co-op. It should not come as a surprise that there is going to be affordable housing here and lots of it. But it's also more than just affordable housing. We are actually trying to maximize our ability to get into the grants, and two things that CMHC has requested of us that improve our chances are as if we offer rent gear to income, in other words, inclusionary zoning, which is a part of the strategic plan, for women and their children fleeing domestic violence. So we've reached out to Interval Housing and initial talks with them to be able to provide them with some. Another specialized group that CMHC values are people with developmental challenges. We're going to make some available for them to at rent gear to income units. So this is, and I should point out that based on our numbers so far, we have a lot of wiggle room to pay back the loan. Based on the Class D estimates, the price point for most of these units is between 60 and 71% of market rents, according to CMHC. If we raise some of those up to 100% market rents, we can drop down others to a greatly lower amount. So that 70, that 30% of, that CMHC requires, we can beat that if we need to.
Your Worship, I think I saw C-CEO Hurdle's hand go up.
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the staff report notes that there is already a high concentration of affordable housing in that area, actually, the highest in the city. Council has made a commitment to distribute affordable housing moving forward, that is in the strategic plan. We are spending, council and staff through council decision, spending money to undo some of the things that have been done in Rito Heights in the past. So obviously, from a staff perspective, we are flagging the concern of adding such a high number of affordable housing units. I'm glad to hear that council's very supportive of affordable housing because we will have other projects in other areas of the city that will be coming forward, and I'm hoping that council will happily support affordable housing in those areas. But this one in particular has the highest concentration in the city, and we flagged it as a concern because it does not align with the direction we've received from council in the strategic plan.
Councilor Senek?
Okay, thank you very much, Your Worship. So like, there's been so many articles in the Toronto Star about co-op housing that this is the way to, you know, try to combat the affordability crisis. We haven't seen, other than the one that they're building on Upper Princess Street, which is not as many units as what we see in front of us, 248 proposed residential units. Like, I don't see how we could say no to, no to this proposal. We haven't seen affordable housing units come through to Planning Committee at all, and we need, we need these, this, these affordable units. We really do, because there's a lot of people that are being priced out of their rental units, being priced out of their, or you can't even get into the housing market at all. And so I know this comes with risk, but we have to go forward to it. It's got all these sustainability ideas, and I support this.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Osterhoff.
I didn't know I was on the list.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
No, I want to speak, but I might as well try to go now. I'm going to find my notes, Mayor Patterson, forgive me. I want to, I do want to thank Councilor McLaren for all the work that he's done on this, and I have some comments, and not all these comments are mine. I've, I've have discussed it at length with others, so I am a dreamer as well in the construction industry and my business and my life, so I really do recognize, you know, you know, even seeing the picture in the paper, the concept drawings, everything is quite remarkable and to see that. And, and you know, I can understand, Councilor Senek, my colleague, to say why we need to support this, and I have encouraged Councilor McLaren over the past months to, to, to continue the dream and to, to find a way to get us the message and the story and, and the substance that we need to see in this development. So I do struggle with it. I think, I think it's a risk. I like the dream, I like the possibilities, I like this, the whole component of it all, but I, I see, I do see personally a lot of risk, and as I spoke to one constituent, the concerns that they have, and really, it's about, it's about our, our money, and a lot, a lot of things don't line up for me here. So I don't, I don't know if we can, we can handle this. I wanted to ask the question, where does the money come from? Does this add to our debt for every dollar we, we, because it's going to be a progression, right, of payments? Where, where does the money come from?
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the report actually proposes that the money could come from the Working Fund Reserve. It's, there's about $9.8 million that's currently remaining in the Working Fund Reserve, and a healthy Working Fund Reserve would be around $10 million considering the, the size of our budget. So this would be taking out of the $9.8 million that we have.
When I, when I look at a building like this, I, I wonder, I think we read it all, a letter about how, this is a wood structure with a tremendous amount of water and tremendous amount of water flowing everywhere. And I don't know who's doing all the supervisory, but there's going to be someone running really busy fixing leaks, and I'm worried, I don't even know if this would even, the concept would pass. Like, I'm in the building industry, and the building inspectors, you know, you, you don't get away with anything. I don't know how, I would like to know what is the feedback now on this design concept for a building inspector, from a building perspective?
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you. So there have been very preliminary conversations with, with staff, both from planning and building, but there hasn't been an actual design review and detail. So Councilor Osterhoff, you probably are familiar, when you apply for permits, you have to submit detailed drawings, and obviously, those have not yet been produced because that's what you would do through the next steps of, of the project, really, through the phase, next phase of Class B and even further, because you need some pretty detailed drawings to apply for a permit.
Yes.
Councilman McLaren, did you want to jump in on that?
Certainly. This is the proposal from our architects, NOR Architects. They're an international architectural company that has done projects all over the world, and they're Canadian, based in Toronto. And it took us a while to go through this. This only came in on August 22nd, but they have plenty of experience, and in fact, they've actually done something for the city in the past. They are both an engineering and an architectural firm. This is part of the reason that we chose them. They have the experience and the know-how how to do this, plus over 800 employees worldwide who work in the Amazon and in the desert, in the Arctic, well, maybe not the Arctic, but pretty close to the Arctic in Sweden, and all over Britain as well, which is a very wet country. These guys are experts in this. They're a professional organization, almost 100 years old. They've been around. I'd like to say that they're extremely professional.
Okay, thank you for that, but it's hopeful, but I know that it's still very, very difficult to, I would ask maybe a point from Mr. Park from, from, from engaging with planning. When you see structure, is this something that you've had time to look at? Have you been involved with this process? Is it, is it, is it a, are there a lot of hurdles that you see have to be overcome? Mr. Park?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. As CEO Hurdle has already stated, it's at a very preliminary stage right now. We've just seen cons- We've just seen conceptual drawings. None of the supporting background studies in terms of what would typically come in with a development application have, would have been submitted. And in terms of the, the things like, you know, water flow and structural, that's all looked at, at the building stage permit. So they've got to go through the first step first, and get approvals in place, if it gets to that point, and then, once they're in place, that's when they would submit their former structural drawings that would be reviewed, weighed against the Ontario Building Code.
Thank you. I'll ask the Counselor McLaren, how many people would live here? How many units, and how many likely people would live here?
There's 248 units, and we have 300 bedrooms, so we're thinking maybe about 350 people.
Why are we building something so large? Why, why wouldn't we consider? I, I, I want to see success here for the organization. This is, wow, you're, you're, you're reaching for the stars here. Why wouldn't we think about a 20-unit somewhere in town and make that successful, and then make the leap to, with it being successful, with the, the many, many attributes that you are going to include here? Where was your, where was your, um, who else is with you on this committee, and who, how are you, how are you working together on this, and why this size?
The size is basically for efficiency. The bigger, the more people are housed, and the cheaper per-unit cost, the cheaper per square foot of area of floor, the larger the building, and the more compact in that sense, the better the energy efficiency, as well as the community that it grows up into. Did you want me to talk about the other board members?
Yeah, give us some idea of the, of the, the support behind this, and it's, that it's more than one deep, you.
So there are currently six, uh, six board members. We're gonna expand that to nine, because we realize that at some point, and then we're gonna need to have a leadership structure that allows 300 to 350 people to move in. The idea is that over the next three or four years that it takes to actually move in, we're gonna build a learning organization, a learning organization based on the writings of Peter Seneg, Peter Drucker, and others like him, like them, who talk about how to create a system that, that fosters learning and human flourishing, because we're expecting a 200-year life cycle for this building, so the problems that are gonna be experienced at 200 years, I can't imagine today. But if we build a learning organization, this is the best way to overcome challenges in the future. So we want a culture of continuous improvement and continuous learning, which is helpful for human flourishing, and a co-op is one of the better ways to do that in a, in a common sense, in a group learning way. And so that's part of the reason for doing this. The actual board members are all pretty much working people. One person is retired, we have one student, and, yeah, well, the one student is working also, and everybody else is working.
Thank you. So I just want to read through the one constituent, let me know that without down payments, as you have said, that's something, because many of the, the people living there won't have that, that there's gonna be a real commitment issue. This is a, 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 a building that will take considerable involvement and commitment and life, and, 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 you know, I don't know how, what will be expected of each tenant? They, they have, will they be expected to be involved in growing foods and that? How, how do you get that commitment, and what if they don't do it?
Thank you, yes, it's part of a co-op. All co-ops require a certain amount of volunteer time to be donated to the co-op to reduce the cost of maintenance and operations. This one will be no different. This one will actually likely ask for a little bit more than the average one. We're thinking about four hours per household every week to work on the vertical farm, to maintain the building, and part of the reason we also need to be a large one is because we will need some permanent staff time, staff people, to organize and maintain this. We have reached out to Bendale Property Management to help with that in the initial few years, because my personal experience ranges up to about 18 units, and Bendale has the ability to do a lot more than that. So we will be talking to them if you guys approve this. If you don't, then it's pretty much dead. The, what happens if somebody does not? So we will be looking for people who are community-minded. There are rules that we will be writing over the next few years, and that the Cooperative Housing Federation of Canada gives us templates for, to allow that, that have also been legally vetted, that allow for that, and we can make changes based on our particular and unique circumstances. So there is an entire support group out there, the Cooperative Housing Federation, that provides a lot of the legal framework for us to build on that. As a landlord, I've also been reviewing the landlord tenancy board. If you are a co-op and you have procedures, they often, very often in fact, defer to those procedures. It is much easier for a co-op to evict a non-performing person than it is for a profit, or for a for-profit organization or landlord to do that. So as a co-op, people who will be informed before they move in of the requirements, they will be asked, "Do you commit to this?", and it will be enforced. One of the things we've heard as talking to other co-ops, that if it is not enforced, that is the start of many, many problems, and it becomes very difficult to fix it later. So we see that as an incredibly important part of the social organization of that co-op, to make sure that these procedures are enforced, to create the learning organization, as well as to create the labor force that will be feeding itself and the neighbors as well.
Have you fed this design through?
Counselor Osterhoff, I'm just gonna jump in, you have 30 seconds left on the clock.
Whoa, I have 10 times more questions. Fire insurance, has a fire marshal reviewed this?
No, that is much later. That comes in like the design stage.
Okay. Well, um, I only have so much time, but I, I, you know, the other words I have was utopian, and they were giving me, and I, I don't, I don't see this working. I, I just do not see this working, and I am a dreamer, and I'd like to see it. There's just simply too many attributes, and I want to see, I wish there was an option to give you more time to present a viable project, but I, I, I can't see it.
Okay, uh, thank you. Next is Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, so just gonna try to sum up what I've heard tonight. So right now, we're $2.3 million line of credit on a vision that sounds amazing, but really doesn't have any meat to it. There's no design plans, there's a lot of preliminary work done. It sounds amazing, and it might be something that a private investor might be willing to find some seed money to move it along. But so far, I've also heard that there's a three-year-plus timeline, so we're not adding affordable housing units very quickly. We're gonna lock up some money that's very high-risk, which is not gonna allow us to have that money. If other affordable housing units or opportunities come along that we can move on very quickly, that money's not gonna be there. We've heard our reserve fund, which is still recovering from COVID, is at just under $10 million. So this is not an insignificant ask. Yeah, if there was, you know, 20, 30, 40 million in there, that'd be amazing, and this would be a far less of a risk. In the grand scheme of things, typically, when people come with something like this, one of the first questions I like to ask is, is what are you bringing to the table? What have you done? What fundraising have you done? Show me $3 million, and maybe we'll match you, but show me $3 million first, because this is taxpayers' dollars at the end of the day. If this goes south, we lose our investment, and we get no affordable housing units, and we're still at that money. The concept here and the innovation that's being attempted is not lost on me. It is, sounds like shooting for the stars, which I, I think we should all do, but the caveat is, sometimes when you try to do too many things at once, you end up doing them all very poorly, because you're spread too thin. So if you're trying to address almost every major crises in the world in, in one development, I feel that that's a pretty high bar to meet, and I feel like it's almost unattainable. It's a worthy cause, but there's no roadmap here. So, so the higher risk there is that you're trying something that there's no real path forward, you're charting the path, which inherently increases the risk, because as Counselor Osterhoff has mentioned, there is probably a ton of Ontario Building Code issues, fire-related issues, structural, we know there's higher risk with wood until it's closed in. There's, there's just so much at play here that I think, just based on my experience and having done a recent small-scale development that took well over two years, and it's basically seven offices in this 1,500-square-foot property, and it took well over two, two and a half years from concept to design to basically being done, that when you're talking something of this magnitude, you're more realistically probably talking six to seven years before you actually even had it done. On the other side of things, there's the things completely beyond our control, which is the, what seems like somewhat imminent shape and structure change, which might be happening at the federal level, which can definitely have the effect of locking up the Treasury Board when a new government comes in for at least a year or two. So with, with that, I mean, there's a lot of things at play here that are beyond this. This is something that I could support if it had a lot more form and structure to it, some private backing and investment, where some of these things were already laid out, like a preliminary design, a concept. Oh, and we've already funded some of these things, and, you know, here we are now with a plan that's actually mapped out. And, and we've had the official sort of initial consultation with planning to see what other pitfalls might be along the way. But at this point, this is $2.3 million for a vision, which although worthy, it just doesn't have enough backing for me to be able to consciously commit $2.3 million to it at this point. So I guess my vote here will be no to this, but my encouragement will be go back, seek money elsewhere, get some seed funding, and then, once more of that is in place, get a private investor, apply for some of those grants, move this along a bit more, to the point where we can now say to other Kingstonians, hey, this is something that's already sort of in motion. Then I could support it. But at this point, right now, with the preliminary data, it, it's a worthy cause, but it just doesn't have enough backing right now and enough concrete evidence to support this. Thank you.
Okay, next is Counselor Hassan, or Deputy Mayor Hassan.
Thank you, your worship, and, and through you, um, thank you, Counselor Bohm, you, you said very well, you summarized very well. There's similar comments I wanna make about it. This is, it looks like a very good project, it's a very exciting project. Since I have heard about it, it's made me feel that I'm hearing a fairy tale story, you know, something to satisfy myself, and, you know, say, ah, yeah, that's, that's a very good story. But it has no background back, but behind there. It's a good organization, it's a not-for-profit organization, good project bringing forward, and we do need affordable housing. But I don't know, it's, make me feel like I'm going to a trip, but I don't have a suitcase. I'm asking my friends to give me a suitcase first. Now, I don't have a clothes, so I have to ask somebody to give me their clothes so I can go the trip. Now, I'm standing at the bus station, I don't have money to travel, I'm asking the conductor or the bus driver, can you take me to my destination and someone pay you from there? They are waiting for me. It's similar things, $2.29 million, you know, this, we can use that immediately for affordable housing and some other project. And the other thing is, I don't know, this huge project, 1.15, $115 million project, how the federal government will fund it with that, when organizations have no assets? They have no collateral to, to present. And again, that's, Counselor Bohm mentioned, that it's, it's coming time, might as big change in the federal government. So to me, it looks like it's a huge risk to put the $2.2, or $2.9 million for, for this project. And again, I encourage the mover to continue to work on it, we're not saying stop it here, but find some other sources. City have done enough by donating the land or giving the land. I think that was initial, uh, you know, thing for us to, to do it, to stand with the project. So continue to be with the project, we have to come with the different sources before we come to the, the city. For this, it's the people's money, it's not cities' money, it's, we don't own money, I mean, to give it to the... And also, I'm worried about if we are going to set the precedent for other organizations to come forward to keep asking forgivable loan. So it's not only, it will end on the, this project, it's will, we will set the precedent that people will keep, will come back to us. So, um, I will say no at this time, but in the future, I will keep option open if the mover will bring some other ideas and other source of income, and bring some more collateral or assets to the project.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Shaves.
Thank you. At least this time I have one counselor in between me and Counselor Bohm. On the overall concept, fully agree with this project, would, would like to fully endorse it. I do have one question, I only need a yes/no answer, because in the report, I noticed near the back there, there's a list of like 21 potential funding sources. I'm just wondering, have any of them been, any grants or forms been done? Have they been contacted? Has it been acknowledgedment? Just a yes or no?
Counselor McLaren?
Yes.
Okay.
So my, my struggle here is, and generally, every time we come here to council or anywhere else, is financial. We are dealing with taxpayers' money. I don't see a financial plan. It's talked about CMHC and FCM, and the maximum, if correct from the report, is about $750,000. But we're talking about 2.3, roughly 2.3 million, that the ask is right now, and forgivable, which I have a problem with, um, because of the security, and we could be using that money for a lot of other reasons. As CAO Hurdle had mentioned, there could be a couple other projects coming forward in affordable housing. What I can't figure out, if they can't fund the 2.3 million at this point in time to get, get them going, how are they gonna be able to find the funding for 170 million? 2.3, like, the $750,000 is a drop in bucket compared to the 2.3, so we're gonna be funding the majority of that. So, which makes me concerned about 170. So we put forward 2.3, as was mentioned, we don't put the full amount in, but every time something goes forward, that money's gone. So it may not be a full one and a half, 2.3, whatever it may be, as CAO Hurdle had mentioned.
So Counselor McLaren would just like to respond to that one question.
So the ask of 2.23 is the very worst-case scenario to get to Class B levels. We do not believe that we will need it all. It is preparation for the very worst case. There is a plan forward, it was not presented in your package, unfortunately. I can start reading it to you if you'd like, but to answer your question, how are we gonna pay for this? Again, the plan is to build that up, to build up the momentum by contracting philanthropic services. These are specialized people who get private enterprise on this. I can't afford to do that on my own. So far, I've been bankrolling this, but the plan, in order for it to be successful, requires an initial investment. That is, that 2.29 is over three years. It's gonna start off very small, because it's per invoice. So if in six months, when we have to report back to you, you do not like the progress there, you can shut it down, and by then, the only thing that we will have done is increase the value of your land, our land.
Counselor Shaves?
Thank you. It still seems to be a high risk for low return at this point in time. It's been stated before, we'd nice to see a little more into it. If they had come in with a little more faith, sort of like how Counselor Bohm had mentioned, here's what we've invested, we'd like you to help us out too, and go from there. So I'm hesitant on this aspect, and I'm not gonna be able to support this at this time. Thank you.
Uh, okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Tozo.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. So I have first question, first say, Staff.
So my first question for a staff, what's the largest grant a co-op in Kingston has gotten from another level of government? If you know off the top of your head, if you know that's.
I don't know. Would staff have that information off the top of their head?
I'm asking the staff councillor McLaren, not you.
CEO Hurdle. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I I'm just looking, we have the KFHC project, which I believe it's not a co-op, but I believe it was the largest project in the last, I'm going to say, um, six years. The overall project was 31 million. The city contributed about 10, a little bit over $10 million on this, probably close to 11 to 12 million. And if other staff are online and wish to jump in, they can they can definitely do so. But that would give you an idea. It's not unusual to have essentially contributions coming forward. And again, that was for the overall project, the construction of 52 units.
Mr. Campbell, did you have anything to add?
Uh, thank you. And through you, I think I would just add that even the Homebase Housing Project at 44 Albert, which did receive substantive funding from CMHC, um, you know, totaled, um, you know, four, $4 million of CMHC investment in that property on a total build cost of approximately $25 million.
How much, sorry?
It was about a $4 million CMHC investment on a $25 million project.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I have a question for the mover. Uh, I asked, it's about governance because I'm on the board of directors of Kingston Frontenac Housing, and I think, as you know, I'm a councillor, I take governance very seriously. Um, six months ago, in February, when this came to council, I actually asked for a list of the board of directors. Uh, there's yourself. Um, we have Ashley Perna, Heather Jones, and new as of July 2023, we have Peter Eganoff, Egan Topf, sorry if I pronounced that correctly, and Roberta Henry. I'm on your website now, and I see yourself, Connor Rambah, William McLaren, Fury, Egnetoff, still on the board, Louise Machette, Steve Miller, and as staff, I have Alyssa Miller. What happened in the past six months with your board?
One of the conditions, one of the legal conditions is that you have to be intending to live on the board or on the in a co-op. So in the case of Jessica Jones, Jess, she, she left town because she got another job. Okay? That also happened with Rob Hodgson, who was on the board. We learned about this. Um, uh, who else got off the board? Saeda, that was also one of those factors there. Um, these are people who were on the board before that time. Ashley, at that time, was not on the board. She was our staff person and has decided to go to school instead. Um, sorry, who else did you mention that is? Oh, Roberta, Roberta.
These were updated to the ministry. So these were who were reported to the ministry to be on your board. So Ms. Perna, who addressed council, wasn't on your.
Yes, those people were on the board. They're no longer, and it has been updated with the ministry.
Okay.
In the case of Roberta, um, she left. She we don't know what happened to her, so we had to replace her.
So what happened to Ms. Perna? She was she addressed council a bit.
Yes. So she, okay. So the law is that in order to get to be into a paid position, you can't be on the board. So she removed herself from the board, became a paid staff member. Since then, she has left that position and has been replaced by Alyssa Miller.
So she left the board because she has a paid staff position and left the staff position?
On the co-op, yes.
Okay. So second question about the board is the board didn't endorse this project. It says that in the report. It says they're supportive, but they didn't vote for it. Is that correct? Just yes or no?
The board?
Just yes or no?
It's not that simple. Please listen.
Okay, okay, okay. Through the chair, please. Through the chair.
Through the chair. We have bylaws that allow for a vote through email in emergency situations. This report came on August 22nd. We have requirements to keep to 10 days to have the kind of meeting, to give that kind of notice, and everybody, we're almost everybody works. So to get that meeting, we have it scheduled for this Friday. The board, the the bylaws allow for a vote through email that will be confirmed at that next board meeting. We are following the bylaws and the laws of the Act.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I'm, I mean, you've come to council now asking for $2.3 million before fully endorsed by your board. So there's some question, there's some real concerns I have there. I'm generally in favor of co-ops. I just visited several co-ops on Elliot Street today because I canvass once a week in my district. I love talking to people. I love knocking on doors. Um, I was excited when this project came. I voted for the seed money. Um, and I have voted for every single affordable housing project in every district, including my own. So I feel I am very comfortable with my record on support on affordable housing. This is $2.3 million with no collateral, using city land with, and I mean, delegation was was, it was a lot, but it was always speculative. We will get this, we will get this, we will get this. Okay, I always like it when people have skin in the game. We've seen this sometimes at council. People come to the table with an ask, they bring something, and I like that. Even some projects I have support, they like the Inclusive Play Project raised $200,000, came back to council and said, we want $300,000 help. They worked their butts off to get that money. I always like it when somebody brings something to the table. Um, yeah, again, I want to echo councillor Oosterhoff. This is very, I mean, this is grandiose. I there was something a bit more, I think, on the realm of possible and tangible, but I think we could throw money at this and we could to be out $2.3 million with no collateral, with nothing to reap from this, and that land will sit vacant for years. And in a house, in a housing crisis, in an affordable housing crisis, not having some housing for people and waiting and waiting and waiting for CMHC and the federal government with a possibility of changing over the federal government next year, and then we are starting a new game all over, there just is enough tangible here for me to support. So I I can't endorse this. Thank you.
Uh, okay, thank you. I need a motion to extend the meeting to finish the agenda. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Tozo. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Next on my list is councillor Ridge.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I just have a couple of questions about, well, many of my questions have been addressed already. But I want to understand on the financial prospectus, you have under subsidies, City of Kingston is listed for $5 million. So are these subsidies in addition to the $2.23 million that you're asking for and the $50,000 already offered? Councillor McLaren?
Part of Class D estimates is that you have to put some number there. It seemed reasonable at that time. If we get more, the house price, the, um, the housing charge will go down. If it's less, it will go up because these are the costs, these are the, these are the that, these are the grants that will lower the cost or raise the cost as a result of having to put something in there that was reasonable. So according to CMHC, at the time that those were written, they were willing to do about that. At the Class D level, prices have changed now because, A, our interest rates have gone down. These things are Class D, and that's why we need a Class B. Class D, by the way, is around 20% within range of 20%. Class B is within a range of about six, five or seven percent of the actual cost. That's why we need to get much more detail. So that prospectus was in May. Since then, we've learned a lot, a lot. We've had many conversations with CMHC and discovered new things and new possibilities. For example, the first one that we looked at from CMHC last year when we were thinking about this has been closed down, rebranded and refinanced as the Affordable Housing Fund. They're promising 95% of total costs after we get to Class B, if we meet a certain number. We've heard that because it's competitive, we may not be able to get the entire 95%, but that's where the philanthropic services come in. Another option that has come up since that was written in August of this year, brand-new funding, the Co-op Development Fund.
So councillor, there is a, there is a line I'm trying to navigate. I'm trying to give you lots of room, but I want you to answer the question because I don't want to be, you're going to have the last word on the option, right, to to explain and answer. But but the question was on the, and I think you have answered that. So I'm going to, I'm going to move it back to councillor Ridge, and if he asks you more questions, then we'll come back to you. Councillor.
Oh, thank you, your worship. And through you, I had more questions on the financial prospectus because that's the information that was presented to us. But is it correct, then, that all the information on this financial prospectus is outdated and of little use for our decision-making at this time?
No, it is not all outdated, and it is not useless. It is a Class D estimate based on the information that was available to us at that time. We have been gaining and look and researching more and more information. As we progress, we learn more, we prepare more, we're aware of more stuff. That's the, that was based on the knowledge that we had at that time.
Okay, councillor Ridge.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, um, then does the the mover have a number that we could replace when just looking at the subsidy section for the financial prospectus? You gave a percentage range. I was wondering if there was a number attached to that, just so I understand.
So if we look at the website on CMHC, this we didn't know at that time, CMHC claims to promise 95% of total costs, 18.5 million in grants, the rest in a low-interest, 50-year amortized loan. That would be one way. However, we have other options. The Co-op Housing Development Fund, for example, claims to have 100 in forgivable, 100% funding in forgivable loans and repayable loans.
So the question was just whether you had a had a number?
Yes, I have. I'm giving you two numbers as possibilities based on the information we have now. The grant writing makes it more certain as we go along. There is increasing certainty over time as we gain more knowledge. If we pause this now, all of that that we've done, all the work that has been done over the last 16 months is essentially wasted.
Thank you. Councillor Ridge.
Oh, okay, thank you, your worship. Um, so, okay, I had I had several other questions, but this doesn't seem to, um, yeah, okay. So I was going to ask more about the financial model and and the feasibility, but if the information that we have isn't isn't entirely correct or at the very least an up-to-date estimate, then I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother with that piece. Um, so this this land has been, this land has been put on hold for a year for for this, and I'm to move forward with this project. The governance risks have already been acknowledged. The design risks have already been acknowledged by other councillors, and the financial risks are difficult to determine due to the lack of information. So there's a number of risks that have been identified here. I I was excited by this project initially, like not this project that is presented, but the 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 prospect of this, um, and for us to develop another co-op, which I'm a big fan of, uh, to look at affordable housing. But this design is so ambitious, um, and it's not what I thought this was going to be. I thought that this would be a couple of, like, modest fourplexes with affordable housing and that we would be able to get that going as quickly as possible, even if it is a, you know, an organization that is starting out, that they would start with a modest project and then move forward from there, and then they could have assets. Um, and so I'm I'm disappointed by this, even as impressive as this is. I it was just a really great opportunity to move forward with building some co-ops in affordable housing. Um, and I hope that, uh, the organization takes that into consideration moving forward. I can't support this option as is. There's just too many risks. And, uh, yeah, I wish everyone the best there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Neney.
Okay, so my question is, you may have kind of already answered it, but kind of builds off councillor Bohm, something he said. So has there been any fundraising, um, to raise these funds, or have you sought out like partners to provide like a forgivable line of credit or something similar? Or has the city been your first stop to ask for this?
Councillor McLaren?
We have been in discussion with professional philanthropic services. They have advised us that what is typically referred to as amateur grant or amateur fundraising should be done last. There is an entire technique and body of science that talks about how best to raise funds, and it's important to be able to get to the right ask of the right person at the right time in the right way. Crowdsources and crowdfunding is how you pick up the slack at the end, according to both of the companies that we talked to. We were on the verge of exactly doing what you suggested. We had one set up, but it was as a result of talking to these people that they suggest if you start with that, you will be limiting your future, uh, income potential. There is a way to do it that garners the best amount, and the experts in that field recommended to us that if you start that way, you will limit your upper limit. You will, you will limit the amount that you will collect over the next several years. At that moment, the board and I decided we're going to put that on pause. We're going to take the experts' advice and say, let's start with what experts in that philanthropic field have said. Do that last and let them help and design that. So we were on that path, and then we got expert advice to suggest we should delay that in order to maximize the amount of revenue that this can get, in order to reduce the amount of that line of credit that we will borrow. So just to be clear, there's, there seems to be a repeated notion that the entire amount would be lost. To be clear, before the next time that we have to report to you, which is in six months, the only thing that's that's going to happen is that we're going to go through the zoning bylaw change. That's going to upzone the land. As a result of that, the equity that you are seeking will be there in the sense of an increased land value that you can then give away to somebody if you choose to shut this down in six months.
Okay. So I I think again, you've answered the question. Councillor Neney?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I guess that's a risk. Based on that advice you received, I guess that's a big risk going this way without a, uh, being sure what the outcome would be. Um, to me, it would make sense to find a partner that would be willing to partner with and then try to like fund that way. Um, so I have a question for staff. So what's the risk of depleting our capital reserves to this level? Um, because, you know, we, we heard that 10 million is a healthy, um, uh, number for a capital reserve. So what what kind of risk would we be getting into for funding future things?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, as as CEO Hurdle had said, a healthy reserve, we'd like to try to keep our working fund reserve around the $10 million mark. Um, we do tend to use in our operating budget about $1 million a year. We also put our surpluses into that. So, um, you know, we are talking about 20, 25% of that reserve fund, so that will bring it down significantly. Um, and I might say the other challenge we have, as I'm sure council's aware, as we're started into our 2025 budget process, um, and I expect we will, where appropriate, be using some of the working fund reserve monies to balance that budget income within the uh, the target that's been set out by council and by the mayor's direction.
Thank you. So there's a risk of, because of all these additional things, we're going to be depleting it even more, um, which could put us in a much more awkward situation. Um, so another question for staff is, um, how often does the maximum funding get awarded from grants like from CMHC? How often do you see that happen? Or is it often just a small percentage? Because I know the city, when we applied for for funding, we had asked for a much larger number, uh, but we were kind of disappointed we only got, we got a lot less. Um, so is there any developments or or similar projects that end up getting maximum funding or even something close to to it? Or is it often a much smaller amount?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And through Mr. Mayor, um, staff didn't do a full research of all the CMHC grants that have been provided in in the past. So I I can't speak for, obviously, the grants that they they've provided across the board. the board. I can tell you that locally, not just the city's experience, but also the experience of other organizations such as Homebase Housing, who had the project, the youth project on 484 Albert, were not successful in gaining CMHC even alone at, at some point. So it is a competitive process, and the comments that we did receive from CMHC representative is that it's rare that they would allocate full funding to projects. So that's the only information that I would be able to share, and if there are any other team members that have more information they'd like to provide, I would welcome that.
Council Shennany?
Yeah, so, yeah, to me, that's like a really big risk, and with taxpayer money. I would, I, I agree. I, I think it's a really nice project, and I showed my wife, she was like, wow. But I, I know some, some peoples have been, some people have been in the, in the business for a very long time, who have a lot of, like, equity and experience, and their success at getting funding from the CMHC is still challenging. So it would have been nice to have seen it start small, and then you build your equity experience, and then you show that you have success, and then that way you can, there's, there's always a possibility to get more funding for the next project, because they, they see that you've already built on success. So that, that's the big challenge I have, is, is, that's a lot of money, depleting our, with the possibility of depleting our capital reserve funds to an unhealthy level. It would have been nice that, to have seen, like, like some others have mentioned, where, where you could have gotten, like, a few hundred thousand dollars here and there beforehand, and it would have showed that there is money coming in, and so there wouldn't be, like, a full dependence, possible full dependence on city funds, because it's all, maybe the board would need to have, like, some people on there that have experience in, in getting a lot of funding, or, or have experience in finding funding or partnerships, or being in certain fields that they have access to these kinds of things. So, I don't know, it's, it's a really hard one to, to really support, because it's a lot of money with a, a lot of risk, and it could possibly put us in a really bad situation with their working reserve fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Glenn.
Sorry, I've been, I've been talking for a bit here, gotta clear that throat. Thank you, and through you. So, you know, I always hate to see a dream die, and I, I think maybe we need to ask some other questions here. So, the money is obviously something that is a big sticking point here, and that's clearly understood. So my first sort of question here is, six months from now, how much money will have been spent? Like, what's the estimate in six months? Because you've asked for three years.
Counsel McClellan.
Okay, so $63,000, and what would that $63,000 be spent on?
That would be stage one in the plan to build this thing, which would include going through the zoning process, and that is also assuming that the city defers city costs to a later date.
Okay. Are there any other activities planned during that six-month period for which monies would have to be allotted now?
We would need a retainer for the architect's and the owner's representative, and if we wanted to start the, the philanthropic services, they would require a retainer as well. I'm not entirely sure what that one would be, but I do know the full total over the next two years. So some of these are, these are just the architectural ones. They've got a very detailed plan that goes over a 10-stage period with timelines and everything. The rest happens when it needs to happen.
So is there, I, I guess, you know, what we're facing here is it's a, it's a big challenge for some people to wrap their heads around the amount of, of money that's potentially at stake here. I understand there's no intent to spend it all, and, and I fully believe that that's where you're headed. Is there a way to have a smaller ask to continue the project and report back to this council for those next phases? Because I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, I think there's, there, there needs to be much more work done on this. So I guess my, that's one of my questions, and then I have another question, which is, is there opportunity to engage that philanthropic fundraiser? Because I understand you want to do this professionally, which I respect, that's what we do at the city as well. Is there an opportunity to engage that person and to get some funding coming in then?
I believe so. I do not know for sure, though. So I think that, based on a rough back-of-the-hand calculation of what they say for the first three, six months, and what these guys are saying, it might only be $100,000. That would keep probably the retainer, but that number is not certain. If they move faster, if planning gets it done faster, we can start moving to the next one. But we do have to report, that's part of the last motion to council that went through in last February, that we have to report by next February as well, how much has been spent. So that is why I've asked for over three years. They've broken it down by their stages. It won't be 2.23 million by February. You have a lot of questions? I can get them answered for you to the level that we're at, at that point. For example, fire. The fire marshal looks at this after we've got the zoning that allows for a particular building to be built. They don't look at something that is at the concept stage. It does come later. Most of these answers do.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Glenn.
Okay, so would you be able to, with the 63,000 and some extra time, be able to get back to council with answers to some of the questions?
So that 63 is what the, what Noor has said is what they need for their first stage. Their first stage is to apply for planning. That's all we would do. We would not be able to do the full planning process. If you guys can do this in less than six months, we would be stuck. If I may ask?
No, you're, you're responding to a question, so you can't, you can't ask staff, I'm sorry.
I do believe that planning can do this in less than six months. So in about four and a half, I'm not sure how many, but when that stage is done, we would then move on to the next one. If you don't give us the money, there would be a huge pause there. That's why it's a line of credit that I'm asking for.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel.
So I'll ask staff, how quickly could that be done?
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Six months is, is realistic. It would depend on the quality of studies that came in, and we're, at this point in time, we were unknowing of possible issues we may run into in terms of servicing the site, or traffic studies, or geotechnical studies. Until we actually see those, it's very difficult to determine. They may require follow-up studies. If it was very clean development, six months is reasonable.
Okay, and is there money available for those studies?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you. I, I believe that the funding required for the studies is part of the overall request. That's in front of council. So how much exactly? I, I think we had estimated for some of the other projects around $150,000 for zoning amendment, and that was a simple project. You will recall, it was a sleeping cabins relocation. It did not include significant studies like servicing, et cetera, because it wasn't as complex. It is most likely that this would be more expensive. How much it would cost, I, I really can't say, because it will depend on how much each of the consultants would charge for the studies.
Okay, so realistically, in the next six months, we're actually looking at roughly 213,000, if I'm understanding this correctly? Okay. So another question then, how do you intend to pay this back if the worst-case scenario were to happen?
So in the worst-case scenario, I'm gonna describe as we get no funding from CMHC. But if we can get, and I'm assuming that we're still built the thing, if we can still build the thing, we can afford to pay it back, so we have a lot of leeway. But let's take the in-between cases. In the first case, the first thing we have to do is upzone the land. That increases the value of the land. If you say no in six months, you have a more valuable piece of land to sell to a private developer. There is the equity. Doesn't come to 2.28 million, okay? Following that, if at the end of six months, the philanthropic services is generating income, then we won't need to borrow any more from the city. That is our primary intent, is to lower the cost to the city by as much as possible while still getting affordable housing built. In order to do that, the philanthropic services needs to come through on that. That's the critical aspect. But we want to not lose momentum, because there's a housing crisis. Just to be clear, if you'd stop this and sell this to anybody else, they start to go through the same process.
So, because, again, you're steering into advocating, so just please answer the question. Counsel Glenn.
So where I'm at with this is, I understand the long-term ask, and I guess what I'm asking is, is there any way to tweak this ask so that the risk doesn't feel so substantial and doesn't hit us so hard, so that we can do a measured approach to this? And I understand that it means coming back to us more regularly, but is there an opportunity to do that rather than let it die on the vine, if it were?
If I may suggest, understand that you can pull the plug on this in six months if we haven't gotten any more progress for you. So you've all asked questions. I've tried to answer them to the best of our ability. We will have a lot more answers as we do more studies on this, and at least in the next six months, the increased value of the land would cover those costs.
Counsel Glenn, you have three seconds on the clock.
Thank you. So can I propose an amendment?
What is the amendment?
I know it's late. So what I'd like to propose is that we allow sufficient funding to cover the costs that would be incurred in the next six months, and have this come back. Because I think there's been support in general for the project.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can I see from? Okay. So here's my ruling as chair. There are two options that are presented before us. Right now, we are discussing option one. If option one fails, then council can pass option two. Option two is to turn down this request, but it does leave the door open to further discussions. So my ruling is, rather than amend, that it's simply a vote on whether option one or option two.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I, I've heard the conversation around the, the table, and I think that there's a general will to see if there's something that can succeed here. So I'm going to ask my fellow councilors to try to work with me on this, and if this means, yes, I know people don't like deferrals, but perhaps that's one of the better things in this kind of an instance. So at this point, I'll just leave my comments there. I'm in support of the concept, and I don't believe that we'll go in overrun, and I think if we put in regular checkpoints, that this can be properly managed, and that we won't run into difficulties nor see us dip into the reserve fund to that greater degree.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I do and recognize you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say this. This has been a very long, difficult, and uncomfortable debate around this table. Because it feels as though we are not debating a project, whether to say yes or no to a project. It feels like we are debating whether to say yes or no to a colleague sitting around the table. This is not personal. We cannot treat this project any differently than any other project that comes before this table. To do otherwise would be a disservice to the way that we conduct business. So I want to assure, Counsel McClellan, this is not personal. This is looking at a project. And so I guess my question to staff is this. Have we ever given this amount of money towards any other affordable housing project from any other agency, any other entity? Is there any comparable case that we have ever done anything like this to any other project?
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So overall, in terms of actual construction of units, yes, we have provided far more funding. But in terms of funding that is strictly assigned for design and to get to a Class B estimate and to retain professional services, no. We have not provided that level of funding for an affordable housing project just for that component. But if we look at actual construction, number of units, then yes, we have provided far more than that.
Okay, so just to, just to probe on that, have we ever given money towards this sort of preparatory work for any project? Have we ever, ever given people funding? I know we, we gave, did give a $50,000 grant to this co-op, and we have done that in the past. But beyond that, have we ever given this sort of money at a point where we don't yet know if the project is going forward? CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So to, to my knowledge and the information that's been pulled together by the housing team, we don't have, we haven't contributed this sort of money for this type of, of project. The $50,000 that you've referred to, Mr. Mayor, is what we typically provide. There have been times where we have combined design costs with construction, so it could have been a total of, let's say, $5 million, but it covered both, so it was guaranteeing as well the city that there would be units that would be constructed. The other piece is, we usually look at, you know, the, the agencies and if they have any experience, or if they have any other property, so that there's also some kind of security for the city. We do go through that process as well. This is something that I know we've mentioned to Counsel McClellan in the past, in terms of starting with a smaller project and building equity.
So here's the, here's the situation. We have to judge this project like any other project that would come before us, and we would never say yes to any other ask like this. That unfortunately is the bottom line. It's a high-risk, high-reward scenario, and kudos to Counsel McClellan. I know there's an enormous amount of work that he's put into this. I know it's a great vision, but at the end of the day, when it's taxpayer dollars, we do not risk or gamble taxpayer dollars like this. We just don't do that. We don't. And so we can't change that now. There's that principle. This is like, boy, there's like a venture capitalist that's watching this, that wants to kind of throw some money in, awesome, right? I'd be all over it, right? I can think of people maybe that we could reach out to, be like, hey, you wanna? I can think of people maybe that we could reach out to, be like, hey, you want to invest in this project? Great. But this is public money. We have a responsibility. And when it comes to risk, let's face it, public money, you have to be very risk averse. We don't take big risks with public money because it's public money. So I'm sorry, I think just for those reasons, just given that we have to judge this like any other project, I'm sorry, I can't support option one. What I will do is I'll happily vote for option two to give more time to come up with a refined ask, something else that is more palatable, but it's got to be, yeah, probably lower reward, but it has to be a much lower risk. So I certainly hope that the board, that everyone involved with Limestone Co-op will take that feedback that they're getting tonight, and hopefully that there is something that can go forward. Thank you very much.
Chair, back to you, sir.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that I think, actually, almost everyone has spoken, anybody else that wants to speak? Otherwise, Counsel McLaren, you have the last word. Nope? Okay. So we will call the vote then on option number one. And that loses by a vote of two to 11. Counsel McLaren and Counsel Ossanik in the minority. So now I will ask for a mover for option two, moved by Counsel Tozo, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff. I think we've debated this, so unless there's any further debate or discussion, we'll just call the vote on option two. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Counsel Glenn, Ossanik, and McLaren in the minority. Okay. So moving on to report number 82 from Planning Committee.
Moved by Counsel Chenani, seconded by Counsel Glenn. That report number 82 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there is just the one clause, official plan and zoning by law amendment 1739 Westbrook Road. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Okay, on to report number 83 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Moved by Counsel Tozo, seconded by Counsel Stephen. That report number 83 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there's just the one clause, accessibility standards policy is amended by the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee on September 5, 2024. We will call the vote. And that carries. Okay. We have nothing from Committee of the Whole, information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, the RXN Reaction Hub project update. Number two, July 2024 tender and contract awards subject to delegation of authority. Number three, community housing cost analysis. Counsel Tozo.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I will be very brief because it's very late. Thank you, Counsel Rich, who put forward this motion. I just wanted to highlight that to solve the housing crisis with enough affordable housing and to clear the by names list, staff estimated that it's between 500 million and 600 million dollars. So to the activists who email us and say we need to fix the housing crisis immediately, that's the ask. That's what we need is, that's the number and dollar figure. When we go out and talk about the housing crisis and what we actually need as a community, this is the size and scope of the crisis. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Rich?
I'll just be brief. Actually, to break down Counsel Tozo's numbers a bit more, it's, let's see here, 512 million to 699 million for the construction alone, plus 9 million a year for wraparound supports, plus an additional $13 million for RGI. And so if you take the upfront cost of the construction and then the wraparound supports, the RGI for 10 years, it's over $1 billion. So, thank you very much.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then we'll move on. No information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. We do have one motion. It requires a volunteer to participate in the operating grants review committee. Do I have a volunteer for that? At the moment, I have a volunteer, then we get to go home because we're almost at the end of the agenda. Question, Counsel Stephen.
Question, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not remembering it's late. Can someone please remind us when this meeting is happening? Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
They are on September 23 and September 30. Time. I'm sorry, I don't know the time.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, and through you. The CAM meetings are usually in the evenings, but they're scheduled once all of the membership is selected for the committee, and they would reach out and coordinate that with individuals.
Okay, how about a motion to defer? Think about it. Moved by Counsel Rich, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll kick that one down to the next. Oh, we can't because it's time-sensitive. Forget that. Scrap it. Sorry. So we're here. We're here until someone breaks under the pressure and just gives in so that we can go. We can't go anywhere until I get a volunteer, I guess. Anybody? Counsel Glenn, you had a question?
I believe it was just for the 23rd.
Commissioner Campbell, could you just refresh again just the date, the time, or just any information that would be helpful to council on that?
Yes, sorry, I'm just looking at it now myself. It is the September 23 and September 30 for the operating grants. These are typically held in the evening. If I may, Mayor Patterson, I would like to add that in the past, when council has not been able to select a member to represent council at the committee, we have had staff who are there as ex officio members who have fulfilled the role of just observing on behalf of the city and being able to speak back to council on any questions that may have been arisen during this because council is not involved in this process in the same way.
Okay, so just to clarify, it can go forward without a member of council?
That is correct, yes.
All right, fantastic. Madam Clerk, just withdraw. Okay. So with council's consent, we'll just withdraw that miscellaneous business item. Perfect. Okay. We have new motions. Any notices of motion? Okay. Madam Clerk, cross for minutes, please.
Moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Counsel Rich, that the minutes of City Council meeting 20-2024, held Tuesday, September 3, 2024, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have some communications. Is there any other business? Madam Clerk, cross for bylaws, please.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Hassan, seconded by Counsel Stephen, that bylaws one through three and five be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Hassan, seconded by Counsel Stephen, that bylaws two through five be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Stephen, seconded by Counsel Amos. All those in favor? Opposed? And we're adjourned. Thanks very much.